Good evening, so we're back. Welcome again to the December 10th Zoning Board of Appeals hearing. We have a continuation that started at 6:00 and then we have a couple of public hearings that are scheduled at 6:30. So we'll deal with the logistics as we go along. The board is, to your far left, it's Mark Cool, he's an associate member of the board.
Ken Forman?
No, I was trying to describe, it's always confusing the right versus the left. To my immediate right is Vice Chairman Ken Forman. I'm Kimberly Bealan, I'm the Chair of the Board. To your right, I guess, is TJ Hurry, he's the Clerk of the Board. Ed Van Kuren is next, he's a voting member. Paul Murphy is at the end, he's also a voting member of the Board. Suri Budrow is our zoning administrator. Adam Costa is here tonight, Special Counsel to the Zoning Board of Appeals. He is from Blatman, Bobrowski, Mead, and Tallerman, so he works with Mark Bobrowski, who's been here throughout the proceedings on the wind turbine. Andra Day Guychecker is our recording secretary. So the continuation at 6:00 is application number 6215, Town of Falmouth, 154 Blacksmith Shop Road.
Madam Chairman, I would make a motion to go out of order and take application 10715 first.
Excuse me, you can't until 6:30, sorry. Those are posted for 6:30 and the applicants aren't here. Sorry.
I don't see it on the agenda.
Those were posted for 6:30, sorry?
6:30, yes. They're advertised and posted for 6:30, notice of public hearing.
So we'll start with number 6215, Town of Falmouth.
So, Madam Chairman, I would like to recuse myself at this time.
All right, thank you.
And I might not be able to make it for the actual hearing since I have an ailing wife at home.
You'll know in 20 minutes, Mark, if they're going to proceed at 6:30.
So who is presenting first? I know, usually work this out, I believe it's Attorney Sonny. Thank you.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Christopher Sonny, I represent about a dozen residents of Falmouth who live near Wind 1 and Wind 2. We are fortunate tonight to have two very highly qualified acoustical engineers here. We have Mike Betarian of Noise Control Engineering, who has done work on this matter for the neighbors, and Christopher Menj of HMMH is back again. You had a presentation from Mr. Menj the last time we were together. The theme for the night will be acoustics, we'll try to stick with acoustics and get it finished. It's very nice that Mr. Menj was able to come back again, even though he's not presenting, but he's here to answer any questions. So after the neighbors' acoustics presentation, you will have an opportunity to ask questions of two highly qualified engineers who've looked at this project, these turbines, since We had reserved an hour for Mike's presentation, but we thought we might break that down into 15 minutes by me on the zoning bylaws that might be implicated by the acoustics, and that might tie in well with our schedule if I go first. I don't think I want to interrupt Mike's presentation. And in terms of the logistics for the evening, we're perfectly happy to follow whatever the Board wishes. If we sit here for half an hour while other matters are undertaken, that's fine with us. But I understand we need to keep this first session to 15 minutes, and I can do that, if that's all right. First, I'd like to show you a model of Wind 1. This is actually a Vestas model, which I've had on my desk for five years. And I just show it to you because you're going to be hearing a lot of concepts tonight about sound pressures coming from the turbines. There are three blades, each is about seven tons. The area that the blades spin in is called a swept area. The swept area of Wind 1 and 2 is about an acre and a third of land. And the question that is going to be discussed tonight a lot is, when these blades pass the tower or come down toward the ground, is it possible that they generate some sub-audible frequencies that can get inside the homes of my clients? And Mr. Betarian's going to say, yes, I don't know what Mr. Menj will say, he's had Mr. Betarian's report, but the question is going to go a little further beyond what we can hear to what my clients say they feel. I also wanted to just show you a scale. This would be a typical 35-foot tall house, and it's just math, this is 15 inches tall, and in reality it's 397 feet. So 15 inches is to 397 feet, as about an inch, and a third is to a 35-foot home. So you can see the scale. Now, these are separated by about five times this rotor diameter. So the house isn't right here, it's about five times diameter away. So I just wanted to bring these tonight so that you could have a visual picture of Wind 1 and Wind 2. I know that you know that they're very large, and I know that you've seen them, but I wanted to have this available tonight. I have a short booklet I'd like to pass out to talk about your zoning bylaws and how they relate to the acoustics. So I can do this fairly efficiently, has today's date, the application number, and this is an examination of acoustics aspects of the town's special permit application for Wind 1 from the perspective of compliance with Falmouth zoning bylaws. There are four bylaw standards. As you probably know, in order to be entitled to a special permit, the applicant must demonstrate that all applicable standards will be met. So we have four that relate to potential adverse impacts for acoustics from the turbines. The first is an absolute standard of 40 decibels at the property line attributed to the turbines. Our bylaw reads, "The Board of Appeals shall ensure through the use of appropriate engineering data that there shall be no adverse impacts on the neighborhood in terms of television interference, ice throw, prop throw, noise, et cetera. There shall be a rebuttable presumption that noise from the windmill in excess of 40 dB(A) as measured at the property line shall be excessive." So, actually, this paragraph, which is in the old version of 24166, the windmill bylaw, has two of the standards, no adverse impact on the neighborhood, and sound pressures measured that can be shown to be attributed to the turbine shouldn't exceed 40 decibels at the property line. Now, you may wonder, no adverse impacts, that's a very, very high bar. But we have to remember that the bylaw we're examining this application under was written and adopted in 1981, and it was for accessory wind turbines in this zone, and they were called windmills at the time, and it was important, if you read that bylaw in its entirety, that the impacts remain on the property where this accessory use is going to be installed. So, you can imagine the town meeting voters saying, okay, we want windmills in town, we want renewable energy, but if someone's going to add a structure to a primary use and it's going to be accessory, we want them to keep the noise or the other impacts from that accessory use within the property. The other two standards have to do with 6 dB(A) above ambient. You heard Christopher Menj of HMMH talk a lot about the DEP's default standard of 10 decibels on an A-weighted scale. An A-weighted scale is designed to discount lower frequencies because we don't hear a lot of lower frequencies. So the A-weighting is intended to be roughly equivalent to what people hear. But in this case, we need to apply a 6 dB(A) standard. In Mr. Betarian's PowerPoint presentation, he will go through the cases in front of this board that have established it. It's two other special permits where you limited it to six decibels above, and it's two nuisance cases where you use 6 dB. And then also, the town meeting voters in 2013 adopted 6 dB as a limit, although that bylaw is not being applied in this case. And the Superior Court, Judge Muse, who issued the injunction that we're under today, wrote at the bottom of page one, "The ZBA found that it had received sufficient evidence to establish that persons at 211 Blacksmith Shop Road experienced offensive sensations because of noxious noise and other objectional features on a frequent and continuing basis, applying a standard previously adopted in two unrelated special permits and one town meeting vote that defines any wind turbine noise greater than 7 dB(A) above ambient levels as constituting excessive noise from such structure." That 7 was an error. If you look at what he's looking at, it was the 6 dB(A) standard. So the court has recognized it, and your board has recognized it four times. You have found nuisances in two cases, Anderson and Funfar, using the 6 dB(A) standard. And you might wonder, well, is that really fair? If the DEP has a 10-decibel standard, why should we be applying a 6-decibel standard? But the answer is that wind turbine sound pressures are very unique. They are repetitive, amplitude-modulated, variable sound pressures with peaks, and many acousticians have recognized that. Where you're using a standard above ambient that works well with regular environmental noise or even industrial noise, and it's a standard of, say, 10 decibels, like we use in Massachusetts, it's fair to apply a penalty if you've got a variable kind of sound, or it has low frequencies or infrasound, or other qualities where it would be fair to apply that penalty. The last standard has to do with not creating a nuisance. Most bylaws, as we have here in Falmouth, have not only the bylaw we're under, which is 24166, the windmill bylaw, but also a separate section that deals with any special permit. And in our bylaws, we have 240216, which requires that any special permit applicant show that he's in compliance with all applicable sections of the zoning bylaws, including but not limited to all performance requirements under Articles 22 to 24. Right in the middle of 22 to 24 is the nuisance section, that's 110. That's the section under which this board found that Wind 1 and Wind 2 are a nuisance in the Anderson case and the Funfar case. So that section reads, "No use shall be permitted which would be offensive because of injurious or obnoxious noise, vibration, smoke, gas, fumes, odors, dust, or other objectional feature, or be hazardous to the community on account of fire or explosion or any other cause. No permit shall be granted for any use which would prove injurious to the safety or welfare of the neighborhood into which it proposes to go, and destructive of property values because of excessive nuisance qualities." No permit shall be granted. So if we have a structure here that the applicant proposes to get a special permit for, this board has twice found that it's a nuisance, and our bylaws that we need to apply are asking us not to grant a permit unless we're sure there won't be one. And this is how we tie back into what we're talking about tonight. As you listen to Mike Betarian and as you listen to Christopher Menj, please ask yourself, are we going to be able to meet these standards? In just the four or five minutes I still have, I'll take you through these tabs, it's very quick. Tab 1 is a list of all of the people, all of the excellent acoustical engineers that the DEP thinks so highly of, they invited to be on a group they called Wind Tag. And the reason the DEP convened this group of experts is that it felt that the existing standard, it's 10 decibels on an A-weighted scale, was not up to the challenge that these new structures we were seeing were presenting to us with its amplitude modulation and the lower frequencies. And I just show this page because Mike Betarian, who's here tonight, was part of the DEP panel looking at how do we do this better, and so was Christopher Menj. So I wanted you to know that this is a unique opportunity tonight, once we get into the acoustic section, you have access to two people who the DEP has a lot of regard for. In tab 2, you have the KEMA study, you've heard this mentioned before, and I just want you to know that, I'll hold up this turbine again. This circle, again, it's equal to one and a third acres of land. When winds are moving in different directions within that area, it's called windveer, and when winds are moving at different speeds within that swept area, it's called windshear. And this study goes all the way back to 2005, told us that this site has a lot of windshear. It's a turbulence site. And at the bottom of the first page under this tab, or if you flip to where it's highlighted on page 9, wind shear is the vertical variation of wind speed. According to RERL, that's Renewable Energy Research Lab, wind shear measures fairly high at the site with a power law exponent better than .3. The consequences of this high roughness are twofold. On the one hand, the wind resource increases rapidly, the wording there is a little funny, increasing the turbine tower height. On the other hand, higher shear levels impose higher levels of mechanical strains on the wind turbine blades and drivetrain. This effect should be taken into account when assessing the suitability of the wind turbine. And then turbulence, turbulence intensity, the ratio of wind speed fluctuations and wind speed, has been measured at the proposed wind turbine site at a level of about .2 or less. This is a high value, which in accordance with the roughness of, which is in accordance with the roughness of the terrain, the turbulence intensity decreases with height. It is not expected that the turbulence intensity will cause mechanical problems for the wind turbine, but in combination with the high wind shear, KEMA will take a closer look at this aspect of the feasibility study phase. This is a very windy, turbulent site with wind shear, meaning differences in wind speed. As these blades cut down through that swept area, they are cutting through winds moving in different directions. Tab 3 is really where I want to say, we're dealing with something other than what you can hear. That's the main point here, is that there are really two realms. One realm is audible sound, where the A-weighting scale and the 10-decibel allowance makes sense. Here, Terry Drum Here, Terry Drummeat says, "It is a very gentle weight or pressure on your chest and body cavity." Most people complaining about a rock and roll band, or a chiller on the roof of an industrial builder are not talking about a pressure on your chest or body cavity. On the next page, pressure vibration from Wind 2, I'm reading the highlighted parts, ear pressure all day, pressure vibration headache and ear pain, on off stabbing pain pressure, ear pain, I can't read those words, ear pain and pressure vibration headache, 3:00 PM pressure and stabbing ear pain. This is something unique, and I think we need to ask ourselves, are we really dealing with regular nuisance sounds here, or something different? On the next page, you see a biography of Dr. Stephen Rauch. He is with the Harvard Medical School and treats patients at Mass Eye and Ear Infirmary in Boston. He diagnosed Linda Okagawa with wind turbine syndrome. He admits that this is a controversial diagnosis. There are no tests that can be done to confirm or prove it. I recently deposed Dr. Rauch, and I asked him, "Can a diagnosis be made just on symptoms reported from the patient?" And he said, "Sure, we do it all the time. I have patients who have migraine headaches. I can't see that on a scan or an X-ray. I have to base my diagnosis on what I'm told." It is basically the patient's report of symptoms of disequilibrium, nausea, brain fog, and migraine-type symptoms of headache and photosensitivity and cognitive dysfunction. The patient would like to know if there is anything else that can be done to mitigate her system, her symptoms. "I have offered to perform my ringotomy and bilateral ventilating tubes." We know that patients who have used a Miniet pump, those are patients suffering from Miniears disease, which is a low-frequency pressure pump, many of them become intensely ill, and nauseous, and headachey, and dizzy when they use the pump. By putting a ventilating tube in the drum, meaning the eardrum, the low-pressure sensitivity of the system is relieved, and the patient can still get treatment benefit from the Miniet without getting the C-sickness. It is conceivable that putting ventilating tubes in a wind turbine syndrome patient would reduce this large volume of low-frequency pulsation and help to resolve symptoms. Here's a respected doctor who's talking about low frequency. That's the point.
Attorney Sonny, before you go on to the next exhibit, I just, we need to open the 6:30 hearings. So, so, let's see, so I need continuation for this hearing, if somebody wants to make a motion.
We're going to continue to, later in the meeting?
Well, I guess that's what the board needs to decide, what they would like to do, what we would like to do.
You're going to continue this hearing until you deal with the other hearings, whether it be a continuation, or are you here there?
So, I would move, or we wouldn't call that table, we'd call it continuing.
Right, excuse me, continuation.
So, let's continue until after we've dealt with 10715 and 10815 this evening.
Second.
Okay, so that was Mr. Foreman and Mr. Van Kuren. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Attorney Sonny. So, then we will, Mark Cool will step back on. And so, the first application at 6:30 is 10715 Gonzalez, 231 Trotting Park Road, T-Ticket.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, are you going to hear these in order?
Yes, right? Isn't that what we? No? Oh, sorry, did I read those out of?
No, no, I was wondering if you're going to hear them in order, and if you're going to hear them now.
Yes, right? I think that's what, is that what everybody wanted to do?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Yes.
Being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11 of Chapter 40A of the Massachusetts General Laws, you are hereby notified that Manuel Gonzalez of East Falmouth, Mass. applied to the zoning board appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 240-3 of the Code of Falmouth to add a dormer, creating additional habitable space on the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on subject property known as 231 Trotting Park Road in T-Ticket, Mass. And for referrals, from health, the structure currently contains and is assessed at three bedrooms. The proposed alterations do not increase the number of bedrooms above the three existing. See plans and file, no objections from planning, no comment, except for referrals.
Okay. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Do you want to make a short presentation, and we'll ask you some questions?
Basically, what I'm trying to do is put a shed dormer. Right now, the house is a raised ranch with two bedrooms in the basement. We are giving up one bedroom in the basement to put it upstairs on the shed dormer. There currently is just one big open room up there. There's not much head height, it's the reason for wanting a shed dormer.
Okay. Let me see if anybody has any questions for you. Paul?
I don't, no, thank you.
Ed?
No.
TJ?
Do you know what the pre-existing nonconformities on the property?
Too close to the road, I believe.
Okay.
Rosa? Okay. Ken?
So, as, when you do this, are you making any modifications to the basement to ensure that the room that you're abandoning as a bedroom remains not a bedroom?
Yes, we are opening, to a four-foot opening on?
Case opening, no?
Case opening on that. That is drawn in the print somewhere on the floor plan of the basement.
I believe you. Okay.
One second.
That's it for me.
Okay.
I do have, Mr. Gonzalez, I do have a question about, on your floor plan drawing, I don't see access up or down on a staircase. Where would that be on the floor plan? Between the basement and the first floor?
It's right off the dining room going in to the basement.
Can you, can you show me on this?
You have.
Oh, I see, right? Just, just to confirm.
That's the stairway? And so?
Because the door goes outside here, that goes up, and this goes down.
Okay.
And we're removing, the stairs come down right here.
Okay. So, it comes right down, through the closet?
Yeah, yeah.
Right here, sort of strong, comes through right here.
Okay. So, on the floor plan on the new addition, where is it? Right here. You'll probably have to go to the mic.
Please, thanks, Mark.
I see the, the encased, or the door for what, it's not depicted as such, but I assume to be the bedroom. What is the other side?
Just like a sitting room.
A sitting room?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so, just for my own clarification, on your survey, there we go, it shows a, a deck in the front of the dwelling with a stairwell that points towards Trotting Park Road, which makes your setback 11.82 feet.
Correct.
On the elevation plans that you submitted, is that going to be removed? You're only going to have a side?
Yes, that one down the side.
So, you're reducing the, the setback noncompliance?
Correct.
Okay.
Or increasing the setback.
Yeah.
Increasing the setback.
Increasing the setback.
Okay. That's all my questions.
Okay. And I just have a couple of questions for you. What's the existing height of the structure?
I believe it's, right now, it's 22 feet.
Okay. And what are you going up to?
Probably about 28.
Okay. And then, could you just, and you might have already done it with, remember, Cool, but could you just walk me through the bedroom? So, existing right now, I see two bedrooms in the basement, one on the first floor. Is there, so there's, how many bedrooms are we?
Three bedrooms.
Okay. And so, you're removing one of the bedrooms in the basement?
Correct.
Case opening now?
Case opening.
So, one will remain there?
Yes.
One will remain on the second floor? And right now, I guess, what are the uses of these two rooms on the sec, on the second floor?
It was just an open space.
Okay.
It was just finished off. I just purchased, purchased the house probably four months ago. It was just finished space, had a stairway going up there. I don't know what they used it for. It's got carpet and everything, so.
Okay, so you make?
I don't know if they were using it for a bedroom, but it's only about this tall.
Okay. So, you're making one a bedroom upstairs, and then is the other side staying a sitting room, or is it all?
Yeah, it's just going to stay a sitting room.
Okay. Is there a case opening or anything?
It'll be open stairway.
Okay.
To it.
Okay.
Just a rail stair.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you. That was all I had. Suri?
That's what the plans show, that it's open.
One more question, Madam Chair.
My apologies.
Mr. Gonzalez, the, what will, what will the bedroom that currently exists, that will have the now, down in the basement, the 48-inch case opening, what will that transform into? What will you use it for?
I'm not sure what it'll, probably just junk, to be honest.
So, storage?
Yeah, storage.
All right.
Okay. Is that it? Okay. How would, like, the board like to proceed?
I'd move to close.
Second.
And so, that's Mr. Foreman and Mr. Van Kuren. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And how would you guys like to proceed?
Motion to approve?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, we'll say, Mr. Murphy, Ed, do you second that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
So, findings and conditions. Finding, it obviously meets 240216.
Increasing the setback?
Yes.
Through the removal of the?
Reducing the nonconformity.
Right.
Maintaining three bedrooms?
Through testimony, they'll, and plans, they're going to remove the door to the basement bedroom, and expand the entrance to 48-inch case opening.
Meets the standards of 240-3.
Because it's not substantially more detrimental?
Yes.
Right? We want to get that in.
Any others? So?
Do you want to state that, stated it's going to be? Yeah, you need the height.
Oh, so?
That the sitting room will remain a sitting room on the second floor?
Yes.
Open to the stairway?
Yes. That was going to be a finding. So, per plans, half, the half wall, which I had missed the notation, Suri?
And the existing bedroom that's being, is being converted into storage space?
Well, I, there can be a finding that was testimony, but you don't want to condition that, because it has a right to?
No, just a finding.
Yeah, okay.
And then testimony that it was, the new height would be 20, approximately 28 feet? Okay. Any others? Good? Okay. Conditions, per plans?
Yeah.
Remain three bedrooms, condition the case opening in the basement on, for the bedroom that's being converted. I would like to condition the half wall. I think we should do that upstairs.
Half wall to sitting room?
Yes.
Along the stairway there?
Yes. Any others?
Here you go.
All right, so that was Mr. Murphy and Mr. Van Kuren. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next application is number 10815 Gardner, 3 Little Harbor Road, Woods Hole.
Being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under Section 11 of Chapter 40A of the Massachusetts General Laws, you are hereby notified that James E. and Kerry Gardner of Manlius, New York filed an appeal with the town clerk pursuant to Section 240-202 of the Code of Falmouth, appealing the decision of the Assistant Zoning Enforcement Officer that no violations exist on subject property known as 3 Little Harbor Road, Woods Hole, Mass.
Okay. And we received some correspondence?
We did. We received correspondence from the applicant's representation. They're asking for a continuance to February 25, 2016.
And let the record show that they did sign a waiver extending the 100-day hearing process for this appeal. It was Attorney Lepper's.
What was the date again? February what?
25th. Okay. So, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we continue.
It has to be a regular voting, remember?
Sorry.
Sorry, Mark.
Trying to, trying to move along. Trying to move along.
I'll make a motion that we continue the hearing to a date certain?
February 25?
February 25.
6:30.
Second.
Okay. So, Mr. Murphy and Mr. Van Kuren, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous.
And Madam Chair, I'd like to recuse myself from the further proceedings.
Happy New Year.
Okay. So, now, we'll be back at application number 6215, and thank you for indulging the short break. I think it served, served that applicant better.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can do this in 60 seconds, and we'll get the expert on his feet at the podium. I did want to submit a document, and in the interest of not using too much paper, I only have one copy. You may recall that on September 17, I presented a PowerPoint presentation, and I promised I would not take this board through it again. I do have hard copies of that presentation. Also, you're going to see a PowerPoint presentation from Mr. Batarian of Noise Control Engineering. He also did a study, which we gave to the town in February. It's dated February 27. And because there's litigation, whenever we complete a study, we have to give it to the town right away, which we did. And the, the actual study is here, although we're not going to make you read it, because you're about to see the slides on it. And we also hired another acoustical engineer. His name is Rick James. He's in Michigan, and he did a peer review of Mr. Batarian's study. Again, I'm only going to submit one copy and not even make any reference to it, but there is a peer review of that study. And I will conclude my presentation with one quote. If you turn to tab 5 of the document we started with, and flip over to the third page, this is an email from Christopher Menj to the fellow you met before, Stephen Wee, Weston and Sampson, the town's outside engineering consultant, on the subject of low infrasound that's created by wind turbines. It's highlighted in yellow. "Now, the pulsing pressure and other effects of low-frequency noise that some people hear is something new, and apparently an effect of wind turbines. It is indeed odd that people are complaining so loudly about sound that an objective view of the noise levels with what we have used traditionally to evaluate audibility and noisiness would characterize as minor or minimal audible noise. And, as he points out, it is a certain fraction of the population." Bottom line, the jury is still out on this. There are numerous competing studies out there that argue both ways on the degree of severity and whether it's annoyance or some odd health effect. I agree with Christopher Menj. The absolute decibel levels of loudness from the turbines that we're talking about are not terribly high compared to that bar down the street that has a band late at night, or industrial noise, or other environmental noise. I agree with him. And I think Mr. Menj is pointing to something very odd. People complain much more than you would think if you just looked at the A-weighted decibel levels. And I think the answer is, the infrasound that you're about to hear about from Mike Batarian, and I agree with him, the jury is still out. It's starting to come in, but the jury is still out. decibel levels. And I think the answer is, the infrasound that you're about to hear about from Mike Beterian, and I agree with him, the jury is still out. It's starting to come in, but the jury is still out. Now, he may wish to comment on that, this is an email I received through discovery in some of the cases, but I think it was very eloquent. I think he put that very, very fairly, that, huh, why are people as bothered as they are? What's happening here? And, and it is known to be caused by wind turbines. So, I'm gonna introduce Mike Beterian, and I'm gonna give this to Terrence.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, I would, I forgot mine, in my car. And Suri, you had passed these out earlier to all of the board members, copies of the, uh, PowerPoint that we're going to be receiving, or reviewing.
Thank you, Todd. T.J., can you make sure this one gets in the file as well? If you need a copy, you can actually, put yours in the file, because mine's missed
All right, good evening, good evening, Madam Chairman. My name's Mike Beterian, I'm with Noise Control Engineering. Uh, I've got a twenty-six slide PowerPoint that I want to walk everyone through, and some of it's a bit technical, and I apologize for that. And I thought to do this best, and if it's okay with the chairwoman, that I would take, just kind of take a minute and pause at certain points, just to kind of ask if there's anything that needs to be clarified. I know there may be a lot of questions about everything in total, but if there's just something that I'm saying wrong, you're not understanding, gives me a chance to just catch my breath, and just gives the board a chance to say, okay, can you, you know, just make sure I understand this right? Is that fair?
Yeah, that's fair.
Just so that, you know, we're not, like, asking clarifying things and then specific questions and stuff, so.
Todd.
I'll try to do this as quickly as possible.
It'll warm up.
No, it was on for a second.
Suri, which one?
The public.
Yeah. Which one does it? Do you want me to do it?
They should, they should be noted on there, which one?
Do you want me to get the light?
Oh, I just, thank you.
I should take a course in this, so I know.
That should be sufficient.
Yeah, since they're about to- All right, well, that's warming up, uh, um, we'll go right, Todd, uh, we can just go right to the, our background, I'd like to introduce ourself, myself, yes, you can go to the next slide. Uh, so, um, I'm with a firm called Noise Control Engineering. Uh, we're in Billerica, um, recently been acquired by another company called Glosson. Collectively, the two of us, well, when we're not working on wind turbines, we do a lot of work in the marine industry, and collectively, the two companies have been responsible for the, uh, design and assessment of the NOR, the Atlantis, and hopefully a new ship that Woods Hole will be getting fairly soon, the RV Armstrong. It's the project manager for that, so happy to have some local tie to Falmouth, and I'm excited for, at ship's arrival in the next couple of months. But, offices are there, um, we're members, the firm is members of National Council of Acoustic Consultants, as I believe, my colleagues, firm HMMH. Myself, I've got twenty-one years in Noise Control Engineering, thirty years in Noise Vibration Measurement Control. I'm a board-certified member of the Institute of Noise Control Engineering, and I just highlight that I'm also now the vice president of board certification, which means that anybody that wants to become board certified has to go through the committee that I chair. So I'm quite involved with that organization. And as Chris Seni mentioned, I was a member of the Wind Tag Group, so that's just me by a matter of introduction. Uh, the next slide, I won't read, but that's on the list of clients that are represented through Chris Seni, uh, Esquire, and I wanted to have that up there. Next slide, uh, was already talked about, talked to by Attorney Seni, the different noise criteria that we're assessing to, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and three from Falmouth, a relative requirement of six dB above ambient, uh, forty dB absolute value, and then a nuisance, um, right requirement. Um, I, I've got a shorthand here, L ninety is kind of a mathematical, um, representation for backgrounds. If you see L ninety, I'm kind of referring to, L ninety background, ambient, kind of all being more or less the same thing. Um, if we were to put a bunch of acoustic engineers, we could argue that there's actually differences, but for the sake of this presentation, we're just, I'm using those, uh, the same. So the first thing I'd like to walk through, so again, this background information, I'd like to present, you know, some pieces of opinion. Um, next slide. So, um, the six dB above L ninety or background is reasonable. Um, it is prior use in, um, six different environment situations here in Falmouth, listed up on the screen. It is context-sensitive, um, so a, a limit like forty decibels may not be applicable at the side of a highway where the actual background noise is fifty. So a six dB above background is, um, is good in that manner. Um, the other piece of this, it's, I don't know if it's been spoken about, but a ten dB increase in sound is effectively perceived as a doubling. So our state guideline allows, without breaking that regulation, a doubling of sound, and it is quite, um, unforgiving for a, anybody that's producing sound. So, you know, that's something that I've, um, I've said a lot, um, I've worked with a lot of industrial clients, I've assessed a lot of industrial clients' sites to the mass regulation, and I generally don't recommend trying to meet that, I recommend going below that. So, um, I, you know, so I'm, you know, so when we're sitting here talking about, is it above or below ten, is it eight point eight or ten point five, you're already talking about more or less a doubling of sound. Next slide. So, here's a list, I think, of all the prior tests. Crossed out the two at the top, because they were done prior to, um, they were, they were paper studies, they were modeling or assessments, and we're beyond that. Um, so I think, you know, anything that's been calculated needs to be, you know, understood that, you know, measurements are probably better than calculated. Later in this presentation, I will look at some model results that was done in the HMMH report to kind of point out that certain thing, but, you know, certainly, um, the oh-five and oh-eight studies, I mean, whatever they say, they say, but we're, we're, we're in a different realm now. Um, I then color-coded the other studies, uh, studies. I would tell you that our study in two-ten, um, wasn't a big study, it was done for, you know, a couple of our, our clients, don't have a lot of resources, so I'm gonna go through that. Um, the HMMH study was quite depthy, and we're gonna go through that, and it concluded that it was, everything was acceptable. Um, our amplitude modulation study, again, some of these were just brief PowerPoints, um, you know, kind of showed AM day, AM data and some other, uh, amplitude modulation, some other effects. And then MAS DEP did two quite extensive studies that concluded exceedances, and again, in fifteen, we're looking at infrasound, they were concluding, you know, that there's something going on. All right, so that was the point, I wanted to take a break and see if we got everything. This is a simple one, I don't think I should, if anything needs to be clarified there. But I will take any questions through the chair or through any board member?
Just to clarify, the-
Yes.
By AM, you mean amplitude modulation?
Amplitude modulation, thank you.
Not, not morning time.
Right, that's right. Good, good clarification. Okay, next slide. So I do want to take a minute, I'm gonna go through all those presentations, and I want to go through my observations of the HMMH presentation, which, um, I saw the PowerPoint presentation, I did not look at, there was, I think, a video, didn't, was, did not watch it, so I kind of looked through the PowerPoint. I just want to make some, make, make sure some things are clear from my, my point of view. Um, so in the presentation, there was a reference made to that we helped, um, helped develop the test plan, that is correct. Um, Chris Menj had myself and other staff at his office, and I think we talked about some of the early test, um, you know, requirements, maybe locations, uh, I actually don't, I remember going to the office, I don't remember the details, um, but I, we were involved, we were invited. Um, that kind of was the limit of our participation, uh, we did not participate in the, um, in the inputs to the protocol, and then the results, that was all a result of HMMH, so we did have some involvement, but not a lot. There is still in this presentation some sound contours and talking about, um, you know, calculated noise levels, and, you know, I think we, you know, we're at the point now that really results should be, test results, measured test results are really what's, what's important here. Um, and, you know, in that, there is some exceedances that are shown in the, even in the HMMH report. Next slide, um, Todd. So it was, uh, HMMH's work in two thousand and twelve was quite expansive, um, they did measure daytime and nighttime, and I, I'm sure you're familiar with it, they did long-term, short-term monitoring, um, they successfully measured L ninety background, I think, you know, levels seem reasonable, just the background without the wind turbine operating. Couple of things that are in circles here that I'm not necessarily would agree with is, so for the operational data, they just used L ninety, um, they used some computer modeling for higher wind speeds versus actual measurements. Um, my opinion is that, that while that's an expansive report, there's a lot of good work in there, it fails to make a proper assessment for a couple of reasons. And, uh, next slide, we'll start with the first one. Uh, all right, so first of all, the L ninety is a, the ninetieth percentile of a group of data. It is, there is reasonable places to use L ninety for the operational measurement. Um, I don't think it necessarily is a good, um, use in a wind turbine case versus, say, a air, you know, something that has a constant sound level. And you can see that this table two is, um, median L ninety values, I've circled all the L nineties, and this is with the turbine running. So this is, um, the lowest level measured in any period, the, the ninetieth percent lowest level, um, for the operational measurement. Um, another point is that even with this, one of the cases at one time is eight dB from the background, and we do have a six dB requirement, so there's a case there where we're seeing that there's a condition shown in this report that would exceed the Falmouth six dB of a background. Next slide. We're gonna go back, unfortunately, we do have to go back to some model data, uh, and this was, uh, again, the HMMH calculations using, uh, you know, modeling software, our company uses the same software, where they're modeling the sound pressure level at a receiver, uh, I think it's two-eleven Blacksmith Shop Road versus wind speed with data from the vendor of the wind turbine. And there's the forty decibel hard, uh, Falmouth requirement. So this report, and now this is, um, all right, this is audio, uh, the red line is from the HMMH report, the blue line is the HMMH report, I re-plotted it and added the forty dB line limit, so you don't see this report with that limit in it. And, so this shows, on a modeling basis, there's a potential for some excesses to occur at these higher wind speeds. HMMH was pointing out that at lower wind speeds, the T, ten dB may be affected, but, you know, I'm here, we're showing a lot, higher wind speeds, that could be an issue. Next slide. Lo and behold, when we graph that data with the data from the MAS DEP, um, without trying to make a science experiment about this, just, you know, how are we doing as our modeling process, how is that comparing with the MAS DEP, there's not a bad trend, the background that was measured by D, I guess this is measured background, yeah, this is measured background, and DEP kind of followed a trend, and the modeling follows a trend, I would say that, that's, the trend is there, but the measured results from DEP are higher. And, um, and so, you know, I look at this and go, okay, well, something's happening here, because it's following the trend, something, something got right, but then it's not, it's, it's much higher, that something is not, is not right. Next slide.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Not to throw you off, but just-
Not above.
Um, you said to ask questions as we go, so-
Yes.
Um, I'm just trying to understand that chart and the information presented on it.
Okay.
So, was the modeling, I guess, the, the actual data had to be taken at a site certain?
Right.
So how does that play into model versus where the, the information was taken?
Yeah, good, good question. So the, and, and, you know, Chris Menj can correct me if I've got anything wrong, and I would welcome correction. Um, so the computer model can be interrogated for a specific location, and in this case, it was the HMMH LT one, which I believe is roughly two-eleven Blacksmith Shop Road. Um, the measured data from DEP was also two-eleven Blacksmith Shop Road.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, next slide, we'll get a little bit busier. Again, it's all the same data, but the two black lines are, are criteria. The forty dB criteria we spoke about, and the, um, this one that's going up is the MAS DEP, that's just ten, this line here is just the ten dB added to this. So, I see one case where it's okay if you use the, um, HMMH background, if you use this background point here, this would brought, this line would, would fold down, but there are cases here that are over the limit with the DEP, and that's what the DEP, you know, concluded. Just, I'm just taking data from two different places and putting it together and saying, look at this, it's not really that complicated. That was a breakpoint, so any, any clarify, clarifying points?
So, so can you point to the specific, just so we're absolutely clear, cases where you're over the limit?
So, keeping in mind that any of these measurements are only good to, you know, plus or minus one or two dB, you know, um, without using a microscope, I mean, that guy is obviously over. Um, these are right on the line, and I, you know, if I zoomed in a bit, I think this, uh, point right here at the low wind speed is over the background, it's under the forty. The triangle, which is actually the L max, is over the forty, it looks like that's actually numerically over, you know, right over the background, that's obviously over.
Okay. Can you all accept that?
I have another slide that has more, you know, that could point to more cases.
Yeah, I guess, I guess a mechanistic question would be why would, as the wind speed is increasing here, there's not a consistent trend, it's not like it becomes over at higher wind speeds, it sort of seems random when it's over and when it's not, is there any?
I'm, I'm not sure if I, I mean, there's a-
Well, these, these two highest wind speed-
These right here.
Yeah, they're, they're under, right?
Well, that guy's over, that guy's right on the line, and this is under, so that's the only thing that's under here.
Right, but that's increasing, that's at even higher wind-
Right, so the reason for that is that the, at higher, uh, wind speed, there's higher background noise.
Okay.
Right, that's this trend right here, which is pretty good. There is a sweet spot that I think, uh, myself and, and Chris Menj have kind of observed, where you're at the, you know, the wrong wind speed, lower wind speed, this, this doesn't address wind shear, we're not doing any studies here with wind shear on it, yeah, so.
Oh, can I ask a question as well?
Yes.
Um, so you have the MAS, or is it, so the model, modeled win one and two, and then you have actual win one, I think actual, is that wind one also, or is it win two?
Yeah, so the, all right, I will, uh, the triangles-
Mm-hmm.
Are the L max values reported by DEP, and the blue square, sorry, that was purple square, is, uh, the LEQ estimated, it's kind of an estimate from the MAS DEP, extracted from the MAS DEP.
Those are both for win one?
For win one alone.
Or for both, okay.
Right.
Win one alone.
Right.
So is there any data for win one and win two combined in the MAS DEP?
So the, the, um, the red line is win one and win two.
Modeled.
Modeled, keeping in mind that the location is much closer to win one.
Mm-hmm.
So there's probably a small effect, like, if you took win one, win two out of that, it's probably very small, and, and Chris Menj would know what that number might be.
Okay, so we don't have actual data for win one and win two that we could plug in on here, is I guess the question?
I don't believe so.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
All right, we good? I got, um, we're at slide thirteen, halfway done. Uh, all right, now we're gonna go to, uh, NCE, the data that we've taken. So our first presentation was September two thousand and ten, NCE, uh, was one of the fir-, was the first company on scene to do some measurements. And so the first thing we presented, which was a board meeting here, I can't remember if it was a selectives meeting or what, um, we presented this data, uh, we were doing things a little bit differently, so the first thing we presented was, um, some measurements, again, at two-eleven Blacksmith- So the first thing we presented was some measurements, again, at 211 Blacksmith Shop Road, which is right here, wind one is right there. And then we did some reference measurements at the same distance from Blacksmith Shop to the highway, but on the other side of the highway. So the reference location's here, Blacksmith Shop Road is here, so this distance and that distance are the same. And you can see that at Blacksmith Shop Road, we're getting a, what we're referring to as an amplitude modulation, very obvious pattern. And at the same night, you know, within an hour, at the reference location, nothing. So there is something that is detectable, that we can trace back to the winter. And later in this presentation, we'll, we can show the math behind that. So I really didn't have any conclusions, we were just showing, this was very early on, it was early complaints, it was just what's going on, and we did some measurements to show, okay, there's something detectable. Late at night, again, this is not something you would get during the middle of the day, it has to be late at night. And some of the early complaints were sleep disturbance, so measuring late at night makes sense. Next slide. So then we actually issued a kind of a report, it was a memo, a year later. Again, we were talking exclusively about amplitude modulation. We gave some conclusions in that report, in that memo. We said that the AM from March, March of 2011 was more severe than last June, which is the measurement I just showed you. It's a significantly different pattern than any other piece of mechanical equipment. We had some graphs at that time, I don't have them here today. And we felt then that details need further discussion, develop appropriate criteria. And we said that the March AM exceeds the mass DEP and FALMeth limit. Am I blocking somebody? Next slide, we'll demonstrate that. This was a graph that was in that report. You can see in this case, the amplitude modulation is very pronounced here. And because of this pattern, it is 100% identified as a wind turbine. That is nothing but your wind turbine. In this case, it was only wind one. And I've got a lot of questions about, is it cars, something else? It's nothing, it's a wind turbine, it's nothing else. And there's a reason, that the time difference, this is time, we can take the time between each of these, and it equals the blade pass frequency of the wind turbine. So it's, it's identifying signature of the wind force. You can see that we, I outlined from HMMH report, they kind of came up with about a 30 decibel background. If we add 10 dB to that, in this case, our mass DEP and our FALMeth limit are both at 40. Red line is there, this amplitude modulation rises above the 40 decibel, and also a 10 dB above ambient. This was back in 2011, that data was presented to various boards and entities and FALMeth. Again, I'll take a minute to break to take a pause for anything clarifying.
When you made, made mention that you did measurements at 211 Blacksmith Shop Road, were those inside or outside the house?
These were all outside. At this point, we're outside. Later on, we've got some data that's inside. This is all outside. Basically, at the base of, if you've been to the Anderson's home, it's the base of their driveway, within 10, 20 feet of the home.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And then again, all late at night, all 11, you know, 11 to 1 AM. All right. Next slide.
Okay, I'll ask, just a follow-up. So late at night, because that's when the background noise is, or the ambient noise is the lowest.
Yeah, I mean, during the day, background noise would generally go up 10, 15 decibels, depending on, you know, where you are. And so, you know, what people are being bothered by, and one of the things they're being bothered by is the ability to sleep with this kind of pattern occurring. And look at the pattern, it, it's, it's like, and I've been in other public venues where I said, this is like having your neighbor's air conditioner with three or four settings, low, medium, high, and super high, and it randomly going off and coming on, and each time it goes off and comes on, it's at one of those different settings. So it's on low, then it's off, then it's on super high, then it's off, then it's on low, then it's on medium. That's what this is. I mean, there's a lot of vari, this is not rhythmic. This is not something you can sleep to if you're, if you're hearing this or feeling it. It's a dripping faucet that has a pat, that has no pattern. Drip, 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 drip.
Do you have tests that were performed during the day?
We have some data, yeah.
But the, the difference here isn't us.
We wouldn't be able to capture that kind of data during the day.
Prenounced?
Yeah, but we can talk about other measurements that are kind of more during the day.
Okay.
And why that, that's possible to do.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, next slide. If we got everyone? Are we doing on time? Okay. Okay. My turn to talk about mass DEP. Since they're not here, I guess they're not gonna come and talk about the report. They did two reports, May and November 2012. The May report was nighttime measurements, the day, the November report was daytime. Wind one was operational only, and only, and tested under worst conditions. And they surveyed four nights, five residential locations. All of the measurements by the DEP were attended. All of NCE's measurements were attended, meaning somebody is there, and if there's a car that drives by, or some other source of noise, you're not using that piece of data. And it's because the engineer, the technician that's there is saying, that's contaminated, I don't need to use, I don't want to use that. The night results with wind one had excesses to the DEP FALMeth at 211 Blacksmith Shop Road on all four nights, and they had FALMeth excesses on one night. I have a better table, I will show this. Day one results was with wind one, wind two running, and they had no mass DEP excesses, because the background noise is higher during the day. And they had some excesses to the 40 dB requirement. I'd like to think the next slide probably shows this better. And so, all right, this is the night report, table two from the night report. And any of the red dots are, red dot triangle or square are the seven points with a 40 dB excess, four points with a 10 dB excess, and 11 points with a 6 dB excess. Right out of the mass DE report from 2012, table two. Next slide. November 2012, same kind of thing, with 14 points over 40, zero points over 10, again, background noise is much higher, and three points over six. So certainly not, you know, as striking as the nighttime. But again, still some excesses to your 40 dB limit. Again, there's been some discussion about what should be used, Lmax or L90, I'll take that, I'll just, let me just report what, what the report said, and happy to take questions about that later. But these are Lmax values. Okay, next slide. All right. So this is a bit of something new, and I know you've had some critique already on something that I haven't even had a chance to present. So we, NCE, you know, our background in marine and underwater noise, we carry a lot of instrumentation that allows us to do some of the measurements that I don't think our other consultants can even do. They can, you know, they can, they can explain what capabilities they have for themselves. Our goal in infrasound was to determine if the turbines were detectable inside the house. All I'm trying to determine is, is it detectable? Can I pick something up related to the wind turbine inside the Anderson house? The doors are closed, and we're inside the house. Our methodology involved using, so using infrasound is a good way to do this. Infrasound is anything less than 20 Hz. You're gonna see data that's less than 10 Hz, and a significant amount of data is in the .7 to maybe eight or nine Hz range. This is very low frequency, it's low infrasound. We measured inside and outside for reference, but we got much cleaner readings inside. And my feeling is that the house actually is acting as a giant wind stream. So, so we're able to get very good measurements. We were able, because of the order to shut down the wind turbine at 7 o'clock, we would come at 5, take readings through the shutdown, then immediately take readings after the shutdown. So we had before and after to the shutdown results. The way this was done is using a very expensive infrasonic microphone that's got capability to measure that well, and with a thing called FFT, or Fast Fourier Transform Analysis, which allows us to look very finely in the frequency domain. Next slide, I think shows some data, or, okay. We did this four times. July 5th at 1:30 in the afternoon, November, November 2014, 6:30, December 13th, 2014, 6:30, February 5th, 6:30. Again, you know, at 6:30, we measured, you know, from about, really about 6 to 7, and measured at the, but the wind turbine shut down was after 7 o'clock. You can see we had various wind conditions and various wind speeds. Next slide. Again, we were doing this inside the Anderson home, and here are your, the other wind turbine, wind one, wind two, and notice. And next slide. So here are the results, and this is where your eyes may get a bit blurry. And I think for those of you with paper copies, I, you know, I'd really say you're probably better off looking there. Let me take a minute to orient you. So this is not time anymore, this is frequency, and this is amplitude. And what you see with these little lines are what's called a signature. It's actually how we, in the marine acoustics, identify what kind of ship is passing by. This is technology, very, you know, commercial use of how we pick up, how submarines pick up, you know, other ships. And then identify what ship it is. This is a bit simpler. We can trace each of these peaks to the blade pass frequency of the wind turbine, and it's harmonic, so we've got a couple of harmonics here. And I think you can see the results from each of the measurements, and I think maybe the next slide has like one big picture. So these are all the different days, and you can see that these, you know, more or less, these frequencies, these peaks line up on each other. What's my, so they look like squiggly lines, I would agree to a layman. What I'm looking at is that these lines, the frequency of this, so I can use my computer and get the frequency of each of these peaks, and I can do a little math, the blade pass frequency is rotation rate divided by 60 times the number of blades, and if I go through that math, I come up with .072 Hz. If I then do some, just multiply that by 2, 3, 4, 5, I get the harmonics at 1.44, 2.16 and on. And lo and behold, we go to our graph, and all these peaks just match up perfectly. It's pretty, you know, simple signature analysis. So 100%, these lines, 100%, these are from a winter. These are all measured inside the house. When we turn the turbine off, I guess I gotta go back. And you can see we had different good days and bad days, or bad days and good days, depending on what the phone's doing there. All right, this is a good one, I'm sorry to make everyone squint. So the red line is inside the house, this is probably the best one, and the black is when the wind turbine's off. So other than identifying the peaks frequency-wise to the wind turbine, when you turn the wind turbine off, they go away, they completely go away. So pointing cases that, you know, this is detectable inside the house. The, so we've measured it at these occasions at Anderson, we've also been over to the Okagawa home and found similar pattern on one occasion there. And we have separate reports, I think it's February for Anderson and Okagawa was probably recently, October or November timeframe, explaining the methodology with all the data in it, you know, all documented for, for review and such. Next slide. And, yeah, I think that's a good breakpoint. No, let's go one more slide, yeah. So infrasound, so conclusions here. What are we saying and what aren't we saying? We successfully collected the data inside the house on four visits and Okagawa residents. Readily identifiable acoustic signature that can be definitively attributable to wind one, possibly wind two. We're in Okagawa House, which is closer to wind two. Wind two was shut down, we still, there was still remnants of the, of the, these frequencies which could have, would have been attributable to notice at that point. So even at low levels, we're picking those signatures up. When the signature disappears and the wind turbines are shut down, and this is not something that I'm cooking up, there's wind turbine sites and papers and other references in Wisconsin and Australia showing very similar data, and again, attributing it to a wind turbine. And, you know, the conclusion of my report was that this was an acoustic trespass. I understand there was some comment that this is a new term, unfamiliar term from, from my colleague Chris Menj. And I'd be correct to correct that, this is not a term, it's a phrase. And if it's not clear what it is, I'd be happy to explain it.
Could you explain it?
You're inside the house and we can pick up the wind turbine. That means there's something from the wind turbine's coming inside the house. Pretty simple. That's really all, that's really it. Now, I've got, yeah, I've got more to go, but I'm glad to break.
Okay, well, maybe I should wait till the end.
Okay. Two more slides. So, why the problems? My take, I, you know, giving, giving you an opinion, this is not appeared in a report, but I thought, you know, everyone's sitting here wondering why, why, what's going on? Why are we having so many problems? Been here for how many years talking about this? Wind turbines are unique sources of sound, and I think that represents what WindTag was trying to do, although they haven't finalized, DEP hasn't issued any new guidelines yet. Physically larger than any other source of noise that wind, mass DEP, or anyone writing a noise ordinance. And I think I laid the wind turbine in the house, and I think, is that about the right separation?
It's a little.
Maybe a little further, so get this as far as we can go. I think you said five times. Physically, sound from that device at that distance, I don't know if I've got that right, it looks a little far. It envelops the house. So when you're being bothered by an air conditioning unit, I've done a lot of work in very, very large air conditioning units, one, air conditioning units that's maybe double or triple the size of the desk you're at, you can still move from one house, one side of the house to the other, one side of the apartment to another and be fine. Wind turbine, there's no, you know, quiet side of the house. It has a striking characteristic, this temporal characteristic of the amplitude modulation, this asymmetric asynchronous sound, and the infrasound previously spoken about. So other sources of noise don't have this, usually if it's an air conditioner, it kind of has a hum, you might actually put you to sleep. Certainly wind turbine doesn't have a hum. And certainly air conditioning units don't have infrasound like we're showing, like with these peaks that are very striking. And this is all, many of the reasons that I think WindTag was formed, to try to get around what is going on, how do we get regulations? And that body ended its deliberation, I think, two years ago, and they haven't come up with anything. And they've had, they commissioned a $400,000 study, and they've presented a lot of data, but they haven't come up with anything. Proper studies were not performed here, and I think everyone knows that, and I'd like to say it again. In my opinion, wind one, wind two is too close to residence at 1,250 feet, and that's my estimate. When I asked for fact-checking from our clients, I got a number that was maybe 900 feet. So whatever it is, it's a, it's a quarter mile or less. And certainly, you know, no one here in the Commonwealth of Mass, or even in the US, or FALMeth for that matter, has good regulations to properly cite these. And hence, the problems that have been occurring throughout New England. Thank you for taking time to hear me out.
Let's see, I'm sure that there will be some questions, I know. Ken, you said that you might?
Yep. So November 2012, there were a number of 40 dB A exceedances, and you also mentioned that, that the use of that 40 dB A limit might really not be appropriate, I guess, or, because it varies so much with background conditions. So that the use of an absolute limit might not, in fact, be very informative or useful, I guess. Is that a correct interpretation?
I don't know if I said that, did I? So you're saying that I said 40 dB might not be a good...
Well, you, you said...
I may have presented a reason why a, a level over ambient is contact sensitive, but I didn't say, 40 was...
Contact sensitive was the, was the exact reason you used. So I guess what, my question really is, how do we reconcile the 40 dB A absolute value which may be exceeded by natural noise and the 6 dB A over background? How, those two standards, how do we reconcile those?
Respectfully? I'm here to present a case for why these turbines are not compliant. I'm not here to help the town figure out a new noise ordinance, yeah, a third noise ordinance. It sounds like you're asking, hey, what should we do? How do we make this better?
I'm trying to understand if the 40 dB A conveys any information about the turbines.
Yeah, all right, I'll answer that. You know, so 40 dB, exceeding a 40 dB limit, in the middle... You know, so 40 dB, exceeding a 40 dB limit in the middle of the night in a relative rural suburban, you know, suburban area, to me is a noise nuisance, is a noise excess. The city of Boston, noise limits during the day are, are in the 60s, and I think at night they drop down to the 50s. Background noise is 30, so something that exceeds 40 during the night is a problem. If you want to go around and find all the 40 dB excesses during the day, good luck. You're gonna be a busy, busy person. So certainly, you know, we're not talking about everybody, you know, driving a car, truck, or slamming a door, a car, running their air conditioner. You can find that 40, excesses to 40 decibels.
Okay, so, so I'm looking at these, there's a May 2012 night report and a day report. The exceedances are in the LMAX versus the L90. So again, if, maybe, maybe you could help me understand the difference between the LMAX and the L90 a little better.
Sure. So it's pretty simple. Sound varies all the time. We're measuring it in this room or out in the middle of the woods, and we've done plenty of noise, background noise studies out in the middle of the woods, and it varies. So if I'm gonna take a sample, and I'm gonna collect 100 samples, whether it's one second samples or one minute samples, I have 100 samples, I now take those 100 noise values and I rank order them from the highest to the lowest. The highest is the LMAX. Drop down 90, so there's 100 points, drop down to the 90th point, that's the L90. We have L50s, we have L1s, so the L1 would be one, one down from the highest point. And so now take that, and we got instruments that we can, our sound level meter has gigabyte of data that we can store. So you can compile this data very, you know, a lot of data very quickly. Typically, our background studies we do for a week, and we've got, you know, a couple, less than gigabytes of data, but we have, you know, measurements every five minutes for 24/7. And they vary, but there's trends that you can extract out of that.
And again, from, from that, what can you infer about the source of the noise?
Well, it just, that, that number, so it depends on your methodology. So the DEP used the tended methodology. You know, there's a person there saying that that measurement, I don't hear anything else but the wind turbine when I take that measurement. And what the DEP does is very manual, actually. Well, let me talk about our method. When we do our wind, our amplitude modulation measurements, we set the meter to like 30 seconds or 60 seconds, we hit go, and we sit there extremely quiet, making sure there's no other, you know, extraneous noise, and if there is, we stop the measurement, reset it and start it again. So it takes a couple of shots to make sure there's no interruption. And that's how we get a nice clean data set without, you know, if there was a car driving by that, up and down would have an interruption in it. So when we're presenting our data, it's a clean data set that an engineer, you know, said, okay, I was here and it was clean. When you're doing automated measurements, which a bulk of the long-term measurements done by HMMH were done, you don't really know what you have. You don't know.
Okay.
And so you really need to do a lot of data collection to, to understand what's going on, and it is quite difficult.
And then, so we have, how generalizable do you think this is? I mean, so these are still specific points in the season, there's May data, there's some November data. I'm curious if prevailing wind direction, seasonal variation, might alter the patterns and what we know about that.
Yeah. Our, from the data, I think if we even combine the data from, so our data is very limited if you look at, you know, we're coming out on certain nights. If you did, I think both companies and even DEP conclude, I don't think you can put all the data together, there's enough to understand a seasonal variation. It's quite expensive to do this data collection. And I pointed out that the mass CEC and the mass DEP hired another company to do a generalized survey, and it was spending about $400,000 to collect things like this to figure out if there's seasonal variations. And there's been some reports, don't recall if they were able to even come up with any seasonal variation in that study. And, you know, that's a lot of money, that's $400,000. I don't think anybody, whether the town of Falmouth or my clients, have even spent a tenth of that.
So we really don't have a great idea about the frequency with which these exceedances are likely to occur?
Right. So you're saying, is this happening 90% of the time or 10% of the time? Well, we went out at half a dozen times, and I will be, I will be upfront and honest that when we go to do our assessments, we look for a certain minimum wind speed. We're not gonna come out on a two knot or a four knot day. And every time we've come out, we've been able to detect something. And I will tell you, when we've come out on really high wind days are not really the best, so.
You don't get as clear out.
Yeah, there's a lot of wind turbulence and things going on. Attorney Senni pointed that out in, in the, from the KEMA study.
And then my last question is, so how does this sound attenuate with distance? And if, and maybe you don't have the answer to this, you know, if we were going to, if we were starting over and hadn't built these things, and we were using this kind of information to cite these, where would, you know, is there a distance that's appropriate?
Yeah, so all the measurements that you've seen in this slide are more or less, I think they're all 211 Blacksmith's Shop Road. So they are all, you know, the, the, the sound has attenuated from the hub. Okay. Our field's pretty good about knowing how sound attenuates. There's some complications, and there's a couple nitty gritty things that, you know, you, you gotta be aware of, but none of those are reflected in any of the bad decisions here. That's, that stuff I think acoustical engineers are handling. I, there's a slide, I don't know if you can go back, Todd, with the one with the amplitude modulation, where I was a mile away, and we were a quarter mile, and at that mile distance, keep going, yeah, so, yeah, go back, yeah. Yeah, so that red line is about a mile away. So a mile away was not detectable, at a quarter mile it was. I haven't tested at a half a mile. Okay, so if I had to ask, I was in law.
And that, that half a mile is sort of the 10 blade radius recommendation of, I believe it's the Cape Cod Commission came up with some regulations that they recommend.
This, or modeling or studying could give you that, what that, what that number would be based on various things. Can't move my clients' homes at this point.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Thank you.
T. John?
You mentioned in your critique of the HMMH report that they use computer modeling data. My question to you is if that's an industry standard or not?
In, okay, so yes and no. The, yes, we all use computer, these computer models, there's two or three different programs, and they're used for various sources of noise, various projects at the permitting level to determine, is this gonna be compliant, and how to make the site compliant? So typical is the model building, we've done a bunch of buildings. Cambridge, you know, they're putting new air conditioning units on a roof, or very big exhaust fans for biotech, will this meet the noise limit? We do our computer model, take into account the shielding of buildings and terrain, and we look at the property line, sound level from the model, doesn't meet it, no, okay, we need noise control. We need silencers, we need barriers, we need various things. That's how that, that computer modeling should be done. In a case of a wind turbine, if you're gonna do modeling, you then need a treatment, and there's not too many treatments to put on a piece of equipment like that. There are some low noise settings that I've seen reduce a couple decibels. But a lot of the problems we're talking about is not just amplitude, it's these other effects, the amplitude modulation, not just volume or the level. There are other effects that, you know, are amplitude, that are level independent. So, so using the modeling to determine compliance, I don't believe has got, I mean, you can do it, but it's not, there's no standard saying that that's proper or that's improper, in my opinion. Did that answer the question? Yep.
Ken?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay, I have a couple of questions for you. You mentioned the term or the phrase acoustic trespass. I mean, you say that's simple to define, it's noise on somebody else's property, I think. But I would say that there's acoustic trespass in kind of all, all areas of things. You mentioned air conditioners, for example. So what diff, and I think that's part of living in a civilized society, there's gonna be noises that trespass, that's why we have limits. So what makes this acoustic trespass unique versus, and I, and I know you kind of said versus an air conditioner, but why does this acoustic trespass make this something where the town shouldn't receive a special permit?
So I don't know if it's worth getting one of the graphs from the infrasound, maybe the one with the biggest picture. Right, that's a good point, you know, other sounds do come into your house. So I made a couple of points that if, if the sound from your neighbor's air, your neighbor's air conditioner comes in, how does that differ? Maybe that's a good way to answer this. So that would acoustic trespass. I'm in my bedroom, and my neighbor's air conditioner goes on. Neighbor's air conditioner is a benign sound, it doesn't vary with time like the amplitude modulation we're showing. I would tell you that most of us would probably fall asleep and wake up when it goes off, when it goes off. How many people have done that? You wake up when the sound level gets lower. So it's not really about amplitude, it's about change in amplitude. I know that happens to me, something goes off in the house, like what happened? Why, you know, power goes out, you wake up. Why? Well, sound level changed. And so we're seeing maybe the amplitude modulation graph, Todd, would be better. You know, you're seeing, you know, power going on and off all night long, which with the graph, yeah, sorry, Megan, you go all the way back with what this graph is showing. So that's why in this case acoustic trespass is a bit more bothersome. The infrasound piece is interesting, and can we go back? Apologize. You know, there's a lot of talk about what does this mean? And I'll, my best theory, and I'm an acoustical engineer, I can't profess to the physiological pieces, but the, this, when you see here, this says 0 Hz, and we're talking about things very close, and most of our audible sound is 20 Hz to 20 kilohertz. This frequency, this is pressure, and when you hear my voice, I'm, I'm changing the static pressure. This zero is static pressure. That's the 13.7 PSI, right, more or less. I mean, I don't know if that value is, because the microphone's not designed to pick up static pressure. So now we're kind of like taking, to some extent, potentially, you know, this is my theory alone, we're kind of messing up very, very low, very, very close to what is static pressure in somebody's house. And what would that do? You know, if you were in a chamber, and we're gonna take the static pressure and change it very, very quickly, kind of like the symptoms that I think we've been hearing related to wind turbine syndrome. Again, it's my own theory, and I don't have support. We've got doctors that are, that are saying other things. I can't go into the medical line. But what I can tell you is these peaks are quite, they're about 10 decibel peaks. It's quite striking, that's a pretty striking signature that is very, very low frequency, that is inaudible, you do not hear this.
Okay. And then the other question I have for you, I, I guess I keep going back to this measuring or wind one and wind two at the same time, because obviously, wind two exists. So, so what's the impact of having both of these turning at the same time?
Well, at Anderson property, you're primarily affected by wind one. So wind two would add a little bit extra, tenth of a decibel, half a decibel, because it's much further away. At Okagawa, you're much closer to wind two, so it would be kind of the opposite effect. Again, I'm working with limited resources of a bunch of residents that aren't asking for, you know, very well-funded studies to look at seasonal changes, what happens with wind one and wind two. If you guys want to give me like a free pass for a week, where I could call the guy up and say, turn it on, turn it off, turn it on, turn it off, we can maybe assess that. But we've had to be able to take the measurements at the ability, when we know these things are going on and off, to be able to determine these effects. So, you know, we're kind of limited. So I don't, I don't have an answer for you.
Okay.
We're not, you know, we're, we're trying to prove that there's an impact, we're not trying to assess all these nice questions that I think somebody, it'd be good if somebody tried to answer.
I think we have to try to answer it, making our decision, what, what the impact is, you know, I think we're charged with that, so that's where our questions come from. All right.
And I'm happy to address as best I can, but I, I work for, I, I've been doing this work for our clients here that have limited resources.
Right.
I know that, I've got to imagine that the HMMH study was probably 10 times more expensive than what my clients have been able to do, and that the mass CEC and the mass DEP is 10 times that. We're talking $3,000, $30,000, or $4,000, $40,000, and $400,000. And I'm telling you, at $400,000 is a nice report, but we don't have answers to that. At $40,000, I don't think you have definitive answers, and at $4,000, I'm showing infrasound and amplitude modulation, no one else is doing that. So tell me, you know, that the residents here that have brought us in, I think we're doing the best that we can in bringing in some really unique capability that other consultants are not doing yet, hopefully.
Okay. Perfect. Let me see, Suri, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So that's all said and done. All right, I think it's probably a good time to take a break. If Mr. Senni, you're all set with your portion of the presentation? Okay. Okay, great. Thanks.
Can we close with the la, I did not, yeah, all right. I mean, I, you had the conclusion slide up there about each of the points.
We got it.
You guys got that.
Yes, perfect. So we'll, we'll take a short break.
Thank you, you've got that.
Okay, so we are now back from our break. I did forget earlier to ask if anybody was recording the meeting, and I see some familiar faces recording, so if you could just identify your name, that'd be great. Thank you. And was anybody else recording? If you could just provide your name for the record.
Yeah, everybody.
Great. Okay, so Attorney Tillotson, maybe you'll make a presentation.
I'm just going to make a few comments before having Chris Menj come back up, because I think probably you want to hear more from him tonight than you want to hear from me. But I did want to say, first of all, one of the board members, I believe it was Mr. Foreman, asked at the last session, at the last hearing, and again tonight, whether there was any data which indicated the frequency with which the turbines operated at that five to six meter per second wind speed between 12 and 3:00 AM, which is the time when our, the HMMH study predicted that there could be exceedances when both turbines were operating. We don't have that data for you tonight, but we do, we have it, and we're trying to run it in a form to make it accessible to you, and we should have that in our January meeting. We're, we collected the winds, we do have the wind speed information, so we're trying to put that together for you for the, for the next meeting. I'd also like to address very briefly the question of the zoning bylaw standards that Attorney Senni mentioned tonight. I'd like to start, first of all, by saying that Mr. Beterian concluded his remarks by saying that, you know, the, not many people measure amplitude modulation or infrasound, and there's a reason for that. The reason is that there are absolutely no standards regulating amplitude modulation or infrasound. And despite the fact that you can measure those things, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're harmful, and you really have to keep that in context. And I'd call your attention back to that noise thermometer that Chris Menj put up on the slideboard at the last time. Even, you can't hear any of the infrasounds, those sounds are inaudible, and the amplitude modulation indoors is going to be so low, it's about the sound level of a recording studio. So again, it's, you've got to put that in context. Looking at the zoning standards, the zoning standard that applies to this particular hearing is the 40 decibel standard that is, was in the bylaw that was in effect in 2010. And that's 40 decibels at L90 from the wind turbine alone. And that's important, because a lot of the measurements that you saw this evening combined the wind turbine measurements with the background noise measurements. If you look carefully at the HMMH report, and Chris can probably tell you exactly which page to look at, there was a measurement of the 40 dB A alone, and I think that there was possibly one exceedance that was found, but only one. The 6 dB A that you've heard about consistently tonight is what Chris Senni would like to be, the standard in Falmouth. It is the standard under the 2013 bylaw, it was not the standard in 2010, and it is not the standard that applies to this hearing. It was imposed in two other special permits, it was mentioned by the board in the context of the nuisance complaints that were brought, which this board heard a couple of years ago. It wasn't something that Judge Muse dreamed up or particularly thought about, he was quoting, or in this case, misquoting, the state, language of the board and the board's decision. So I think that you really have two special permits where this board has imposed that 6 dB A standard, where it wasn't strictly applicable, and I would ask really the question for you to determine is what makes sense in this case, based on the science and the science information that comes before you. And I'm going to suggest to you that the 10 dB A standard is as protective as the 6 dB A standard. I'm going to go through just very quickly the submission that Mr. Senni submitted tonight, and just a couple of points on that. The Wind Tag attendees, yes, Mr. Beterian and Mr. Menj were there. DEP has been looking at this 10 dB A above ambient standard for a number of years. The wind turbine issue has been debated by DEP staff, by consultants, by groups that DEP has gotten together, including the Wind Tag group, and they still have not changed the 10 decibel above ambient standard. There is also a reason for that, and there is no strong support, scientific support, for that 6 dB A standard you heard about. The, with respect to the wind shear that was noted under TAB 2, that's the 2005 KEMA report, those were modeled, modeled numbers that were based on the manufacturer's specifications. Wind shear has not been a huge issue at these turbines, they've been operating for five years. This report was 2005. I'm not clear why Mr. Senni is including the KEMA report, which he has discredited on several occasions, to suggest that there is a wind shear problem at the turbine location when there's not. I think that with respect to the sworn testimony, I'm going to give, I'm going to pass on that, because I'm going to ask Dr. McConney to speak to those issues when he is here next time. With respect to the email after TAB 5 from Chris Menj to others regarding the infrasound and the infrasound pressure, the bottom line, the jury is still out on this. This was a 2010 email. The jury was still out in 2010 on the impacts of infrasound. The jury has come back since then, and the findings of all medical peer-reviewed analysis and reports that have studied infrasound have concluded that there is, there are no harmful medical effects that result from infrasound, that you can measure infrasound for sure. But if you're talking about acoustic trespass, you'd better arrest Mother Nature, because her acoustic trespass is frequently much louder inside the Anderson home, and much more evident than that from the wind turbines. And I submitted this afternoon, and then to you this evening, you didn't have a lot of time, but Peter Goldberg has looked at both the infrasound, the NCE report, the thick one that was handed to you, and also the DEP's 2012 analysis on, or measurements of this particular site, and has some very, very strong and rational criticisms of those. They're short, succinct, and I think Chris is going to go into them in greater detail, but I'd ask that you take a look at those. The infrasound report is particularly easy to read. The analysis of DEP's study, the L90 versus the LMAX, Mr. Goldberg does a very good explanation of that, and why LMAX is not the appropriate measure to use. Again, Chris will get into that in a moment, but I would just call your attention to the fact that you have both of those reports that were turned into your, this evening. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris, and if there, unless there are any questions from the board now.
Yeah, I do have a couple of quick ones. The first is under the, how is the 24110, the nuisance section of our bylaws relevant here? Because there are no clear dB A standards specified at all, it just says, there shall be, you know, no use permitted, which is offensive because of vibration even. So you can say that infrasound is vibration, or noise of any kind is vibration.
Well, certainly infrasound can produce measured vibration, whether it produces, I think, in order for it to be nuisance, this is what I would say, it has to be perceptible noise or vibration. So you have to be able to feel it. And if you can, you can measure certain things that you can't necessarily feel. I mean, you can cook yourself up to a heart monitor, and you can see your, you know, and they look like the same types of things as, because frankly, that is infrasound as well. But you're not-
So the criteria would be that it is perceived?
It's perceived and disturbing in some way, I think. I think you have to go one step further, because-
And who's the judge of that?
Well, you are, for purposes, for purposes of this special permit, I think you are. And, you know, that's, I realize, but, and I think what you have to do is you have to look at all the information that you hear from the opponents to the special permit application, all the information that the town presents to you. You have to weigh the credibility of the people you're hearing from, you have to think about it, and, you know, I-
So that's one question.
You've got a tough job.
The second question pertains to the issue of medical harm. I don't see any references in our bylaws to actual medical criteria for harm.
There are-
It's, it's, it's vaguer than that.
It certainly is vaguer than that, but I think that when you're looking at certainly some of the complaints that are included in what has been presented to you tonight about, you know, piercing in the ears, thumping on the chest, pressure, there is no medical basis, I will tell you, as a preview to what Dr. McConney, for this. And I think when you're assessing whether or not something creates a nuisance, one of the things that you do look at is can this, whatever it is, can it make people sick? Because if it can make people sick, by definition, it's got to be a nuisance. I think I would give you that.
But must it rise to the level of making people sick?
It, it, I don't necessarily think it needs to rise to the level of making people sick, but it needs to be a little bit more than, I see it, I don't like it, I hear it once in a while. And I think, again, that, the exact measurement is a difficult one.
I mean, because other criteria include fumes, odors, you know- I mean, because other criteria include fumes, odors, you know?
Right.
I know this board has concluded there are nuisances just with respect to odors in the past, so.
But fumes can make you sick, odors don't necessarily make you sick, but if it's a consistent odor, you know, from something, yeah. So I think it's not, again, I think it goes into the mix, and it particularly goes, I think, to the credibility of some of what you've heard and read and will hear from some of the wind turbine opponents. Because what they say is very strong, and frankly, you know, again, there's no medical support for that. Anything else at this point?
Is everybody else all set?
All right.
Okay.
Thanks. Chris?
I had an opportunity to review Mr. Beterian's PowerPoint presentation earlier today, so I put together a few comments about it, and also a few comments at the end about some of the comments that were made earlier this evening. First of all, with regard to the Falmouth 40 dBA noise limit, there was a lot of discussion about that. I would like to point out that, consistent with my figure 16 in my report, which you saw Mr. Beterian show, with the two curves, the background curve coming up and the red sound level curve from the turbine, those are independent of each other. And when the wind speeds get up to the point of where both the sound levels would be approaching 40 dBA, you've got contributions from both sources. So they add together, and it's difficult to tell which source is dominating at that point. There were a lot of measurements that the DEP made that were, sound levels that were higher than 40, but again, it's hard to know what were the sources of that sound. Perhaps the turbine was contributing to some of that, but we know that the background sound levels are also high at those higher wind speeds. With regard to the exceedances of the mass DEP limit, I mentioned to you at my last presentation three weeks ago about how inappropriate it was to use the LMAX as a criterion for the, for the sound of the source as compared with the sound of the, of the background, which is, which is to use the L90. And we talked quite a bit about that in my presentation, and Mr. Beterian presented that, those discussions as well. I would like to call your attention to the recent submittal by Tech Environmental, which is Mr. Peter Goldberg, the December 10th letter, which Ms. Tillotson described earlier. And he has written what I think is a very lucid critique of why comparing the LMAX to the L90 is not valid, scientifically valid, or an appropriate method. And I encourage you to take a look at it. For example, he shows how in some of the measurements that were made at 211 Blacksmith Shop Road, the measurements of background sound, in some of those data points, we have cases where the LMAX exceeds the L90 by 18 decibels, and it was all just background sound. So the, as I mentioned previously in my presentation three weeks ago, it's a very subjective kind of analysis to try to choose which seconds represent the sound of exclusively the turbine and characterize that as exclusive turbine sound as, for purposes of compliance determination. And I argued that comparison of L90 to L90 with the turbine running and the turbine not running was really the only fair apples-to-apples approach to really determine how much the turbine is raising the background. And what you will see in the back of Mr. Goldberg's Tech Environmental's report attached is the mass DEP policy guidance that was issued in 1990, and then updated, it was updated in 2000. And there, I have outlined a line in it on the second page of that that states that this L90 is compared before and after the installation of the facility to determine compliance with the 10 dBA ambient increase specification. I'm going to go get my water heated up. So what, the southeastern, I had argued that the southeastern district of the mass DEP had not been consistent with some of the other districts in the state in terms of their use of the LMAX value. And, and there have been, and you'll see in Mr. Goldberg's write-up, there have been a number of studies that have been done where, for permitting, where an L90 to L90 comparison is made because that's what the DEP written policy indicates. I should also, would also like to say that I stand by my results and the recommendations that I provided in my original report in 2010 and what I provided again three weeks ago. And as you will see by reading Mr. Goldberg's paper, you know, there's agreement there in terms of the approach that was taken. The next point I would like to address is the amplitude modulation that Mr. Beterian focused on. First of all, I would like to say that the measurements that he used was a one-tenth of a second sample rate and a fast response of the meter to be able to discern these little subtle, these subtle variations in, quick variations in the sound level. I should just say that this is not standard noise measurement methodology, that the standard methodology is to use, the industry standard for noise measurements is to use a slow response. And that's the approach that the DEP suggests. Also, I should also mention, and I think Ms. Tillotson mentioned it too, that there are no standards to address amplitude modulation, as far as, as far as I know, how it should be addressed or regulated, certainly not in Massachusetts. And the term amplitude modulation is a rather, kind of an esoteric term that's used to describe, a way of describing the swish-swish sound that the turbine makes. And it's, and it's, it occurs occasionally. The data that you've seen that Mr. Beterian has shown has been, you know, chosen from very long strings of data where there wasn't any amplitude modulation, because when you go out to listen to the turbine, you don't always hear it. Sometimes you do hear it, but you don't always hear it. It's periodic, occurs occasionally, excuse me. And such variable sound is not, he was describing it as quite awful, and I guess, you know, that could be a matter of interpretation. I like the periodic sound of waves on a beach to be, I think that's pleasant. It's a periodic sound, but I find that to be pleasant. There's also oscillating fan, for example, would be a periodic type of sound, maybe not so pleasant. But it's not an uncommon characteristic of, in the environment. I also, finally, on amplitude modulation, I would just like to point out, and this has been mentioned already, that the sound levels that are shown in his fluctuating graphs are around, are low. These are not high sound levels, these are low. These are around, it's around 40 dBA. And typically, the outside-to-inside noise reduction for a home in the northeast with the windows closed is around 25 dBA. So those levels will be attenuated by about 25 dB coming inside the house to a level of around 15, which if you look at my noise thermometer that was in my presentation and also in its figure eight, page A2 in my report, corresponds indoors to a, to a level comparable to a recording studio or a broadcast studio. So while it certainly, I don't dispute that it can be audible when it's very quiet in the home otherwise, if there's the furnaces running, or if there's an air conditioner running or a fan running, refrigerator, it's, I don't think it's going to be audible. Now with regard to infrasound, I guess it's already been said, but the sound levels that are shown are well below the human threshold of audibility. And to back that up, and Mr. Beterian did state that, he did agree with that, and I was pleased to hear that, even though it can be measured by fancy instruments, it doesn't mean that it's perceptible. And for your reading pleasure, we have provided you with a paper, a peer-reviewed paper in the Institute of Noise Control Engineering, which is the journal of the institute to which both Mike and I are members, written by Robert O'Neill, Robert Helwig, and Richard Lampeter, all of whom are, by the way, with Epsilon Associates in Maynard, Mass., and they're all very capable acousticians. They did a very thorough paper and study of infra, of low-frequency sound and infrasound from wind turbines. And this is a recent publication, I'd say it's 2011, it's not yesterday, but it's very well researched. They conducted dozens of measurements, both outside and inside of homes adjacent to a wind farm in Texas where large wind turbines were installed at distances that were a little bit less than the distances that we have here in Falmouth. 950 feet, I think, and 1,000 feet, something like that, instead of the 1,300, which is, I think, the closest that we have here. And there were more turbines. There were, I think, up to four turbines within 2,000 feet. And they have a lot of graphs, there's a lot of data in it, but if you, you know, care to read the conclusions, that's useful. The graphs show that the infrasound that they measured in the homes, they used similar kind of instrumentation that Mr. Beterian used to measure this, this low-frequency sound. And it shows that the, and what they provide is they provide the threshold of audibility on their curves. Well-researched thresholds of audibility based on studies in Europe and other places. And the, the other thing I want to tell you about this report or this paper, this article, is that it has a great literature review at the beginning. So in the first section, they, first they provide criteria from the World Health Organization and the UK Department for the Environment, Japan Ministry of Environment. And then following that, they provide a literature review, which is several pages, a couple pages long, which I think summarizes the research in the area. I think this could really assist you in, in your decision-making. Finally, I will say that, well, next to the last thing, I will say that every credible health study, health effect study that's been done, to my knowledge, has concluded that infrasound from wind turbines has no adverse health effects. You already heard that said. And I would also say that acoustic trespass is a new, maybe I called it a term, a new phrase that I, was, just has, have just run across. It's not been, had any history or standing in the professional acoustical community, to my knowledge. Okay, so that, that's kind of a summary of the, of my comments on the, on the comments from, on the presentation, Mr. Beterian. And I will let Diane's comment on the email quote from me, by Mr. Senney, stand, she's correct in her comment. I would like to remind you about the attended versus the unattended measurements, just very briefly. I believe that there is the potential in attended measurements for, and particularly if one is making judgments about what is the dominant noise source, there's a potential for really not getting proper data. Because it's very difficult for the human ear to discern what is controlling the overall sound level. And so that's why we think it's more appropriate to rely on metrics that are comparing apples to apples, the L90 to L90. It really gives you a much better reading of what are the, what is the influence of the machine in question, without any bias or judgment. It's not that there is any bias, but not any, without any judgment on the part of the listener. Now, with regard to comment made about modeling, I believe, Mr. Hurry, you asked whether modeling was a industry standard in these cases. And I would like to point out that modeling is a, is a very, is a requirement of the wind turbine noise modeling is a requirement of the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center for citing wind turbines now. And it must be done in, in fact, they even specify some of the parameters that must be included in the modeling, such as the ground absorption factor and some other factors in orders to, so that the noise predictions, the sound level predictions that the models make are consistent with their, with conservative assumptions. And we, we have done modeling on many wind turbine sighting studies, Gloucester, Gardner, Cohasset, Massachusetts, Kingston, Rhode Island. And in all of those cases, we've used very similar methodologies, very similar approaches that we've used in the Falmouth study. And I will remind you that we needed to do modeling for our study because Wind Two had not been built yet, and that was part of our charter in contract that we had with the town, was to model the potential effects of Wind Two plus Wind One. Any questions?
Please. Paul?
No, thank you.
And TJ?
Yes.
Ken?
Yeah, I have a couple. So you mentioned that the amplitude modulation, the one-tenth of a second frequency measuring was non-standard, but would a human ear, would a human being be able to discern changes in sound amplitude over those kinds of frequencies?
Yes, we can hear that.
Okay. Because, you know, it's relevant because the, really, the bylaw doesn't pertain to instruments at all, it pertains to what humans can hear.
Okay.
And then you also mentioned the attenuation by the structures, but again, am I not correct in thinking that our bylaws really, they pertain to the sound traveling across the property line?
Yes, they do.
Okay. And lastly, in this O'Neill report, were they looking at Festus turbines or?
These were GE turbines. I think they have both GE and Siemens turbines. They did not have a Festus turbine in the study that they did, although the literature review covers a broad range of things.
And is there any reason to feel that the different manufacturers produce different levels of noise?
Well, there are specifications on turbines as far as how much noise they do produce. I did not do a direct comparison between these two, but they're, the Siemens was a 2.5, 2.3 megawatt bigger than the Falmouth one. The GE is a 1.5, a little bit smaller.
Thanks. We have another question.
I don't have any question.
I have one more.
Oh, okay.
Has anybody ever tried to do anything to bait this, you know, attenuate the sound in a given direction?
Well, there has been some research that's been ongoing into attenuating noise from wind turbines. It's a rather, it's in its developmental stages. There are modes of operation that turbines can get into that reduce the noise level. I believe that General Electric has looked into some modifications to the blade's trailing edge, such that it has a sawtooth kind of a shape instead of a smooth shape. That may, I think that may have, I saw a study, that may have given them a couple of decibels of reduction. Very tall noise barrier near the home would provide some kind of benefit. Those are the kind, those are the kinds of things that I know of that, you know, could be considered.
Have any of them ever been tried anywhere?
I think the GE has been implemented in full scale somewhere, but I'm not aware of any more details than that.
What would constitute a very tall noise barrier?
Well, typically- Well, typically, a tall barrier is maybe twenty to twenty-five feet.
No, but are we talking trees, are we talking a cement wall? I just don't understand what it is, what it would be.
Oh, what a barrier is, yes. The material for a noise barrier, you've seen them along the highways.
Okay.
That's, it's usually a concrete material. It can be made of wood, but it needs to be, you know, relatively thick, solid, basically airtight, so sound, air doesn't leak through, sound doesn't leak through.
Would that have an effect, just with the height differential that we're talking about here?
It's not a very practical solution with regard to wind turbines because of the fact that the source is so high in the air. So, you would need to have the, a barrier very close to the home property, and it would have to be really tall to block, you know, the lines of sight to the turbine and its blades. The geometry is very difficult for wind turbines. You see them next to highways, but the highway noise source is at the ground.
Okay. Thank you. Is everybody else all set? Seri? Okay, thank you. So, what I think we'll do, or attorney, I don't know how the plan was, I don't know if you've set it up. Any further comment, or?
I think we set it up with Mark LeBroski, that we have a back and forth of the experts. So, if the board would appreciate it, I think Mr. Beterian would respond to Mr. Mende's comments.
Okay, why don't we just, a short period? Because I do want to have some public comment tonight. I know we were asked if that would be afforded as to the noise, obviously, it's eight-thirty, so.
I don't approve of that.
Okay.
Mike would respond.
Okay.
Okay, bear with me. Bear with me, bear with me, because my comments would reflect Tech Environmental Memo of December ninth, Tech Environmental Memo of December tenth, I got both as I was driving here. The only way I could comprise what's in here is I had one of my staff read it and call me, tell me what I needed to know, and then I looked at it very quickly as I came in December tenth is the review of DEP. So there's a comment about LMAX versus L-90 being scientifically invalid. I'm not sure if I understand how somebody can say that, because if I'm measuring anything and I take the maximum value of what that quantity is and the minimum value, they're comparable. Just in the larger, you know, how much money does everyone have in their pocket right now? A person here is going to have a buck, and the other's going to have fifty bucks, and we're going to envy the guy with the fifty bucks. It's comparable, right? And we're going to feel bad for the person with one buck. So, I'm not sure I buy that, and I understand how somebody can say that. I would direct you to Peter Goldberg's qualifications in his December ninth memo, because he wrote both of these. And while he does have many years of experience, and he is a INTS member, he is not board-certified in noise control, he's actually board-certified in meteorology. So, I would, you know, I'm not sure if I understand that. Certainly, if we had a meter here running, and we put a source of noise on, and we, it was tape recording, and we said, okay, what's that reading while it's running? That would probably be the loudest one, it's going to come up with fifty. Then we turned it off, we kept the thing running, we said, what's the minimum? That might be thirty, in this example, or let's call it thirty-eight. Difference between the two is eleven. It's a pretty reasonable comparison. So I don't know the statement that LMAX and L-90, I think we should hear from the DEP on that, because they were the ones that did it. And we've had debates in our, in our field about how do you do these comparisons. Most strikingly, I would point you to, he shows, Peter shows in his report, in his letter from December tenth, the policy, let's kind of call these what it is, DEP really hasn't done a very good job, and they may need to come talk to you. You guys all have this document? This is the policy. This is the only policy that's got a document number and a date, says increases the broadband sound by more than ten dB above ambient. Technically, that's wrong, everyone uses dB, it's just dB. dB is an actual sound level. This is a change in sound, it's ten dB. That's it. They don't say anymore. Now, Peter then refers us to the next page where he's got something that says noise criteria at the top. I've actually never seen this document, and I think this may predate, I could be wrong, I think it may predate the policy which was done in 1990. But whatever, it is a guideline where there's some support. But then, in his own document, and again, it's a for use in inter-agency policy deliberations draft, right on the paper you have, I'm kind of confused why we're even talking about this. In cases of impulsive, fluctuating, sporadic, or short-term events, I'm reading here now from that paragraph that says DAQC. In cases impulsive, fluctuating, sporadic, and short-term noise events, or such as impact noise, this is an impact noise, but it's definitely fluctuating, and there's some impulsive nature to it, but it's not impact. Public address systems, steam releases, et cetera, DEP or the municipal official, dot, 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 may use peak sound level readings taken during the duration of the event to determine whether the condition of air pollution exists. Peak sound level, I believe, is, you know, you can call that LMAX. So I, a little confused why we're talking about this. I think the answer, let's leave it at this, you know, agree to disagree, get your answer from the DEP. They may have a hard time, because I don't know if they're as staffed as they used to be, they had a lot, lost a lot of acoustics people back in June. There was some statement about phantom L-90. Table one, three-seven, three-fifteen, three-seven, three-twenty-three, three-seven, three-thirty-two, there's levels of eighteen to, phantom dB increase of eighteen-point-two, eighteen-point-seven, eighteen-point-seven. We went back and looked at where that data came from. It's not on Blacksmith Shop, it's not on two-eleven Blacksmith Shop Road, you've got to go back, way back into the DEP's report. It's from, it's from Black, it's from the intersection of Blacksmith Shop Road and the Service Road, much closer to the highway. Hence, there's a bigger difference between the quietest point in the day and the noisiest point of that period, because they're a highway. Quietest point reflects at 3:00 AM in the morning, when no cars drove by. The loudest reflects when a car drove by. Not too many at 3:00 AM, but I'm sure there are some. So the fact that that's a phantom increase, it's a real increase, it's just not from the wind turbine. It's from something else. My contention would be, it's from a car. The rest of the data, stuff happens. There's a graph in the, in the HMMH report that shows real data, you know, piles of data every second, and it varies all over the place, whether there's a wind turbine or not. So I disagree that, I don't believe the DEP's done it incorrectly, you can debate this all day long, it's really for them to inform you. Okay, took enough time on that. My report on, my, review of my report, it's funny, his review of my report got here before my report. Infrasound is everywhere. Yeah, it's in this room. I mean, infrasound is just low-frequency sound, I could bring a meter out and measure it. Everybody keeps talking about, it's quiet like a studio, it's, you know, it's, you know, wouldn't be detectable, there's comparisons to background noise. You know, background noise, just ambient background noise, we, you can tell, I mean, you know when there's an offending noise, it is, it is a different character. And I've used in public meetings where I've been kind of trying to, you know, make an interesting point, my Tony Award, my Grammy Award analogy. Grammy Award's not awarded to somebody based on one number. What's the dB reading of that song? Way more complicated than that. You know, and it's not awarded on amplitude, it's, there's a, you know, everyone knows what music sounds good and what maybe doesn't. So it's quite important to understand the signature content, and that's what we're doing, and that's why we're looking at amplitude modulation. The other point of all this is that all of those measurements we've taken are, you know, are traceable back to, by the pattern, they're traceable back to the, to the wind turbine. Whereas if I just give you a number, maybe that's the wind turbine, maybe it isn't. And I will say, I just, I'm going to take a moment, you know, there was a statement in here, if the detection of very low inaudible sound inside the house is a crime, I don't think I said it was a crime, and everyone's all bent up over acoustic trespassing, as he alleges, then he better arrest Mother Nature because her infrasound signature is written plainly inside the Andersons' home. I think that's an unprofessional statement to make. I gather Mr. Goldberg knows more about Mother Nature as a meteorologist than I do. But certainly, there is something detectable that's not in the regular pattern there. And I think what maybe was missing here is what came first. And I was hired to come out to help explain why our clients were having distress. So I think what everyone's forgetting is that the distress happened first, and we came out to see was there something happening that might explain the distress. So you have a distress from an individual, and you have a measurement of something odd inside the house and outside the house. Are they connected? The, you know, I believe they are, I can't point to medical research. I think when you look at medical research, there's a lot of selective use of certain studies, and studies that show it and studies that don't. So certainly, I'm not just trying to measure something and, in absence, I mean, you know, there's no reason to measure infrasound in this, in this room right here, there's nobody complaining, nobody having distress or problem. All the places that we were doing measurements were people that were in distress, so. Okay, cover everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody's all set? Okay. So we will open it for public comment, two minutes, and keep it to the noise and sound, I guess, is better, so. And I will limit you to two minutes. And I apologize in advance for--
I have two PowerPoint slides. Can somebody work this?
Yeah, I know. Well, why don't we, if you want to plug that in and let it warm up, and then we can take public comment, that might be the best way to do it.
My name is Rich Caruso.
Yep, so if you could come up and give your name and address, which I believe you're starting to do. And if it's, if you have specific questions for any of the people who have spoken tonight, experts, address them to me, and we'll try to get an answer afterwards.
My name is Rich Caruso, I live on Sitters Pond Road. It's a first-town meeting I've been to, just trying to get some facts on some of the things that are going on. I have a question for Mr. Beterian. One of the graphs that you put up, I think it was from December thirteenth, had three or four different plots on it. I couldn't read it on the Xerox copy too well, but I think some of those graphs were with and without the turbines running. And they seemed to follow the same plot, both running and non-running, and I just was looking for an explanation as to why they followed a similar plot, that's all. And I really couldn't read the chart very well in the Xerox copy, so I, I'm guessing a little bit, so.
And I'll just say to you as well, prior to Mr. Beterian answering, we have everything in the office, I don't know if we have larger copies, but everything, just so you know, is open to public inspection at the office, if you want--
I've downloaded a lot of the information so far.
Okay. Great. So, Mr. Beterian, if you want to, so, Mr. Caruso, if you want to sit down, we'll get your question answered by Mr. Beterian.
Is it this graph? Yes, this one. They seem to follow the same pattern, and I'm not sure if some of them are living without the turbine running.
All right, let's see, without having the slide up there, if you've got my slides, slide twenty-two, December thirteenth, Mr. Caruso's pointing to that piece of data, and I'm looking at a black and white chart. So, I'll try to make sure I can answer this and get it explained. Okay, yeah, it's even more challenging. So, December thirteenth, there's a black line, that's with the wind turbine off, and then the red line is inside with the wind turbine on, and the green line is with the, is outside with the wind turbine on. And the same color patterns used in all of the graphs. And I think his comment is, like, the, while the general curves are the same, like, so you could look at, the black line follows the bottoms, the troughs of the red line, am I getting that right? So he's saying, why does that happen? So, what happens is, the red line sticks up above, so the black line's essentially the infrasonic background in the house, and the red line is what, you know, we're saying is, you know, is the signal, the wind turbine. And the data, yeah, thank you. So the-- It's a mess up your screen. So that's the background, this black line here, and the red is the signal, and I think you're pointing out that why does this match, you know, down here, right? Right, is that the question?
They follow a similar pattern, one higher than the other.
Right, right. So there's some other thing happening here. This, they, this is the background, so this, in between the trough, we're going to rest at the background. It can't go any lower, because that's the background, no sound will go below the background. And then these things rise above the background, it's high ten, high pole in the tank. And then over here, I have no idea, ocean, I don't know what that is. I know what these are, these are the wind turbines, and I don't know what that is, and I don't know what that is. We also identified, I won't take too much time, a very high, I think this is, this is off, I think it's a six or seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven X signal in Anderson, and we found a very high nine X signal in Okagao. Again, I don't know what it means. It's just, it's very preliminary results.
Thank you. Any other public comment or questions? Yep, sir?
My name is Dave Mount. I live at two-twenty-one Blacksmith Shop Road. As you face the road, our home is the next home to the right of Mr. Anderson's. I would take exception to the implication of the town's attorney's comments that somehow you don't hear this noise. We hear it outside ninety percent of the time that the turbines are on, and we hear it inside the house. There are certain rooms where I try to do some work, and the noise vibration is coming right through the windows. I've had the experience of our heating vents along the walls actually vibrate with the windows closed. We've also had, I've also had experiences, and I've testified to these things, I've filed with the town my complaints along the way. So this disturbance is real, it prevents us from using certain rooms in the house at certain times. It caused us to leave our home when the turbines were running at night and sleep at another residence, my wife's sister's home, which is miles away. So the sound isn't just like a safe room or a refrigerator, we know the sound of the refrigerator, these are different sounds. And the impact that's described in those peaks really helps me understand how disturbed I am, because it's not regular. It's regular sometimes, and then it changes. It's so unpredictable, it makes it terribly difficult, it's very stressful. Wind changes, and then that sound changes, and then you don't know what to expect. You go out to get in your car in the garage, and the sound is coming at you, we got to the point where we keep the garage door closed until we get in the car, because it's so disturbing coming in. I just wanted to give you a sense of, this is real to us, we are really feeling it. We are hearing it, and in some cases, I woke up in the middle of the night one night, feeling all disoriented, I didn't know what was happening to me. I have some medical issues, I was afraid that that was the cause, and I finally ended up consulting an acoustician who was here in Woods Hole over the summer, and he said to me, that sounds exactly like infrasound, but you're going to have a problem, because infrasound isn't regulated in our country. So I just wanted to share those thoughts, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. All right, is this warmed up for, it just went off. Shut off. So does anybody else want to make public comment in the meantime?
Shut off again.
Okay. Yes, sir, in the back, if you want to come up to the microphone. If you could provide your name and address, and I can make public comment, thanks.
Should I say it?
Yes.
John Carlton Foss, eighty Church Street.
Thank you.
I just wanted to--
I just wanted to clarify about acoustic trespass. It is a term of art that has been growing for, what is it, two years, something like that, in the community that has concerns about wind turbines. It was discussed, I think, two years ago at a conference here in Falmouth about wind turbine noise. And I gather from Mr. Menj that it is now expanding into a larger community of people. So just as, I think that's facts about that term, so you understand it.
Thank you. I think we're still getting back up and running. I'm going to let him go, and then, once this gets heated up.
Hi, my name's David Moriarty. I live at 93 Lower Road, West Falmouth. I have a question for the acoustician.
So direct it toward me, and then I'll, yes. Once you're finished.
Would you say that every wind turbine project in Massachusetts is unique in itself, in that you really couldn't use a study or a model unless you actually went out and did the study yourself for it to be applicable to that particular project?
So is that all of your, that's all you have? Okay, great. So you want to, yep.
Let's see if I got this right. So, yeah, is every, so if you're doing a study ahead of a construction, the abilities in the study, and I don't think I'm going to say anything that Chris Menj will, you know, disagree with, the tools are out there to make the study, at that point, it's a study, applicable to the site. The modeling software we do takes into account terrain, and the modeling would take into account the number of turbines, the turbine source levels, but it's like any other computer modeling, garbage in, garbage out. The tool does not predict infrasound. The tool does not predict amplitude modulation. It predicts octave band, which is very coarse frequency, sound pressures, and it would predict a weighted sound level. And again, it's a tool. It has its own foul, you know, it will, it's an approximation still. So a measurement, if you've got an existing situation, the idea of doing more modeling doesn't make sense in my mind, you know? When you have the real thing, you're better off just measuring it, because there's other things. Our tools do have some limitation. And again, I might let Chris Menj follow up if you need to. Thank you.
Are you all set with his answer? Do you think that you have anything to add? Just limited to the question of, is modeling sufficient?
Well, I would mention that the modeling uses, generally uses one-third octave band, which isn't as coarse as octave bands. At least the data provided from the manufacturers is in one-third octave bands. But I believe that, in my experience, the modeling has been fairly good. It needs to be done in a relatively conservative way. As I mentioned, the DEP, or the Mass Clean Energy Center suggests a hard ground factor in the modeling. But if the model is built well, with the proper terrain, and has the wind turbine data in it that's correct, certainly the wind turbine data is collected in a very controlled fashion at reference sites, and the specification for that is quite strict. So I believe that it's sufficient for citing a wind turbine, as long as the conservative assumptions are made.
Thank you. Mr. Donald, I think it's loaded now.
Can I get the lights up? Can you make that full screen?
It's F5.
There we go. Yeah, that's, no, that's mine. Okay, go ahead, just next slide. Okay, tonight, we've heard, we've had, we've heard reference of testimony that's been made by Peter Goldberg, by, obviously, HMMH, and we've talked about how the CDC's involvement. I received an email through the Freedom of Information Act, and I will send you the actual PDF of the actual email, but I've typed this up so you can read it. This is from Peter Goldberg to a personnel, an employee of the Clean, Mass Clean Energy Center. And what he's asking is, "Did you get my message about the Environmental Wind Energy Group meeting on 1/18 Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. at HMMH?" Now, that's Mr. Menj's employer, HMMH, Harrison Miller Miller and Hanson. "This group would like to welcome your attendance to discuss how our respective organizations can handle organized opposition to community wind projects in Massachusetts. Are you available?" And then, for more information, he refers him to Steve Barrett. Now, Steve Barrett is the Director of Climate and Energy at the HMMH. And they give you the phone number, which is HMMH phone number, and their address. Now, what I would like to know, I have a question for Mr. Chris Menj. Is HMMH still holding meetings to handle organized opposition to wind turbines? And if they are, how can we trust Peter Goldberg or HMMH? I mean, this is, attorney Tillerson talked about credibility. I don't think there is any here.
Was that it from the slideshow, Mr. Donald?
It is. And you can leave it up there.
Well, with the slideshow, will you submit a hard copy?
I will.
Okay, right. And Mr. Menj, if you want to just address those concerns.
You see, the date on this was January 2011. That was after, shortly after our Falmouth study was concluded and presented. And yes, we acoustical consultants are concerned, and as is the Clean Energy Center. This was sent to the project manager for the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center, Mr. Martinez. And the Clean Energy Center is also concerned about it. This was sort of the beginning of some of the kinds of complaints and the kinds of organized opposition that we've seen. Normally, we don't see this in our profession, and so it was a surprise to us. And Steve Barrett has been with my firm for probably, I would say, maybe 10 years, eight to 10 years. He worked at Epsilon Associates prior to that, another reputable firm. And he's been working to, he's focused on helping clean energy projects get developed where appropriate, all over the country. He's focusing a lot on solar at airports these days. But back then, it was, we were taken a little aback by the kind of, you know, strong feelings and organized groups that were coming out. And the EBC, Steve is the, was the Chair of the Environmental Business Council's Clean Energy Group Committee. And so it was sensible for him to hold a meeting at my company, we have a conference room, to try to understand where these complaints are coming from, to try to discuss, you know, how we should address the public in these kinds of situations. So I think it was very professional of us to have a meeting, to try to, you know, get people's opinions out on the table. And we're not biased. We do, we do studies all over the country for all different types of clients, and we're just trying to understand public reaction, since public reaction's a very important part of what we do.
Mary Zawaski, 53, Ransom Road. I live by a much smaller turbine, but the reason I'm speaking is because I get these same, like, very strange effects at night where I can't sleep. And I didn't know what it was, and I spoke in front of another meeting years ago, where I said it, sort of like, I started to try to measure it myself, because I just didn't know what it was. And then, when I see these graphs tonight, I realize it's that infrasound going up and down. I didn't expect it. I expected that the people who put up the turbines knew what they were doing. I trusted them. But then to not be able to sleep and not realize that it was that, it's just so frustrating. So I just feel like I have to speak because of that.
Thank you. Yep. Yep.
My name's Peter Hargraves. I live on Southview Way in East Falmouth. I am a town meeting member in Precinct 9, and I guess I feel compelled to speak. Part of it's personal, this is a comment, and part of it's related to what we're doing here. The personal part is, I think I was somewhat misrepresented in the enterprise, and I'm now the poster child for running a turbines 24/7. But the enterprise failed to report the complete context of my comments, but to stick to the agenda that I appreciate, you narrowed it to the noise comment. And the context of my remark in that arena is that I'm retired from 36 years in R&amp;D. I have an advanced degree in engineering. I understand finite element analysis and FFA, and how good these models can be, and especially how validated computer models with supercomputers can give accurate results. And looking at all the data, I spent about four hours poring over everything on the website. There's a substantial amount of information, as everyone knows, dating back to 2005. And listening to the presenters, I mean, I think that Mr. Batarian has done an admirable job of trying to write a new standard while advocating for his clients. But in the interest, and as a taxpayer, I think that what we're here doing is trying to understand if these turbines were installed and operated lawfully under the best knowledge that existed at the time, and not reverse legislating the operation. Everyone knows that knowledge evolves and will write better regulations in the future. I think that's what's a non-conforming use is called, something that was okay, but now it's not. And so I have no doubt that people are experiencing pain and suffering from these. I'm not sure that the solutions that we've been arguing in an adversarial mode are really the right way to resolve the problem. Obviously, something needs to be done, but I don't think it's shutting down and tearing down the turbines. And I'll just close by saying, in terms of the data, if you look at the information that should be considered with respect to the regulations that were in place when the turbines were built, the statistics are what they are. We had a saying that statistics don't lie, only statisticians lie. So you can run the data through different filters and analyses, statistical programs, and you can come up with a version that supports your point of view. That's why there are two people in an adversarial discussion in a court proceeding. So let's keep our eye on what we're trying to do here, and just determine whether the turbine was put in lawfully and run lawfully and within the regulations when it was established. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to make one comment in response to what you said about your comments in the enterprise. We don't, our decision here is based on information that's received here, so we won't be reading in the public domain what's out there. The board makes its decision based on stuff that's said in public hearing and stuff that's submitted. So I just wanted you to know that, and everyone to be aware of that, too.
I appreciate that, but that was personal for me.
I've been on that side, too. I know how that feels, for sure. Any other comments, or is everybody all set for the night? Okay, great. And you'll public comment again on other aspects of the project. So I think we're all set for the evening. We'll need to continue this matter, obviously, and I know a date has already been set.
It's been discussed, and hopefully the board members, I made you aware of it, it's January 14th.
Yes, January 14th.
As I, as you look at that, I did schedule one at the board's insistence, insistence for 5:30.
Yes, because we're tight.
Which should only take maybe a half hour, but I suggest you schedule the wind turbines at 6:30.
Okay. Well-
Why not 6:00?
Because you keep running over. To be quite honest with you.
What's the, can you remind us of what's scheduled at 5:30?
It's the old main room.
It's the 40B. You just have one aspect to clarify. But, oh, do it-
6:15?
6:15.
Fine, fine.
We don't have dead time, you know? Okay, so-
If that's okay with everyone else, all the attorneys?
Yep. Chris? All set? So we will need a motion then to continue to January 14, 2016, at 5:30. Oh, 6:15, excuse me. Okay, Ken, a second?
6:15.
So, TJ, excuse me. We're still having public hearing. Thank you. So that was Mr. Foreman and Mr. Hurry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you. Okay.
So now the open meeting?
So now open meeting.
What's first, minutes?
Thank you. Could you please just exit quietly as well, because we do have open meeting? Not that anybody pays attention to me.
It's going to flow. That might get me-
Right. Is that, okay.
Let's see. So-
Yeah.
No, not the opinions. It's the permits from last week. But I've sent you.
14th of January.
I'm sorry. I thought it was. Oh, yeah. Oh, sorry, this is, I can't sign this.
I got to-
I can't vote on this one. Was I here?
Yeah, the nanotech one was continued. That's the last one.
I'm good.
Oh, yes, I can't, sorry, my apologies. Okay, so do you-
I'm not as well, but you can stay.
So minutes first.
Yeah, sorry, sorry. I just don't have any time to say. Minutes for tonight, minutes. November 30th and December 3rd. Did everybody have a chance to review?
Yes.
Everybody's all set? Okay.
So is it November 30th?
Motion to approve the minutes.
November 30th and the 3rd, December 3rd.
Yes.
Okay. So, so-
Motion to approve those minutes.
So Paul and Ed, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll have to abstain, because I don't think I was here November 30th.
No, November 30th, right. So you'll abstain from those.
You don't need my vote, anyway.
No, and December 3rd is, well, you know.
Everybody was here.
Yes, right. So then, the next one, Mark will have to ask you to recuse, or it's review and discussion, possible vote on appeal number 6815 Anderson and number 7015 Okagawa.
All right, I'm recusing.
Thank you. A lot of back and forth for you tonight.
Does everybody have their copy here?
Yep.
I have copies if you-
No, I got it.
I don't have a copy, actually.
Anybody else need one?
I do, sorry, please.
This is the draft that Attorney Bobrowski worked on. We finalized it. Can Foreman give us those?
Okay.
I sent it out to you guys today, Abby.
Yesterday?
Yesterday, thank you.
Yep. Did everybody have a chance to review?
Yes.
Anybody have any comments or concerns or questions?
You want to deal with one at a time?
Yes, sure. So why don't we do 6815 first? So this was the Andersons. This relates to just, well, this relates to both win one and win two.
There was two decisions in this one.
Right.
So the first one is on the decision, the findings and decisions are on two and three, pages two and three.
So everybody had a chance to review those?
Yes.
Oh, God bless you. And so that vote, or that we will make, I suppose?
No, that vote was already taken. You just need to approve the decision as written.
Okay.
On that portion.
And everybody's comfortable that decision?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay, the second part?
Second part- Second part is the win two appeal.
That requires a vote still.
Okay, where we indicated last week that we were inclined to vote five to nothing, that they would be barred by latches from bringing the appeal. Okay? And everybody's comfortable moving forward with that?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes, on the Anderson.
Okay.
And that's, so the decision as written is okay, so if you'll take a vote?
So is there...
Well, you're going to fill in the blanks here.
I will as soon as you guys vote. Hello.
So is there a motion?
I make the motion to accept.
To approve the decision as written?
Oh, that's right.
And do we need a separate vote? We need a separate vote.
You have a vote for the other one, and you approve the decision as written.
Yes.
What you need now is just to make the vote and read that.
I think we should have a vote on each of the two.
What, can I, can we get through this one?
Yeah.
Because its member, Van Kuren, will make a motion to deny the win two appeal because the matter was barred by the doctrine of latches. And that is based on the findings that the board discussed on November 30th.
Okay.
Yes.
So Ed, you make that motion?
Yes. Second.
Okay, and Member Murphy seconds that. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that's unanimous.
So now you make a vote to accept the decision in total, please.
Okay. Is there a motion to that effect?
To accept the decision in total. So that's the cease and desist on win one and the...
That, that decision was already taken, so what you're doing now is approving it as written.
The decision.
As written. So moved.
Okay.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So you got that they're approving that as written, Ben?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So that was 6815. The next we'll have to do is 7015, and we'll need a vote on this as well to the same effect to affirm the building commissioner's denial, deny the appeal of the opponents. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'm trying to articulate that, but I'll make the motion to...
Here, you can read it.
Yeah, I just read it.
Did I borrow it from latches? I didn't hear that part, I'm sorry.
I didn't say latches, but I, yeah, so...
See where that blank is? Read from there.
Well, I think we know what we're doing, so...
The only thing I'm, I think we...
I make the motion to deny, oh, sorry.
Are you...
We wanted you to draft this, but did we actually vote?
No.
No, you have not voted it. The consensus was five to oh, that, to deny the appeal based on the doctrine of latches.
Yes.
So you instructed Bobrowski to draft this...
To prepare it.
And now you are going to vote your consensus and approve the decision as written.
Do you want to reconsider? Do you want to have some substantive discussion?
I'm just not sure that I, I feel that Okagawa, Okagawa had a stronger case that...
You went through these points.
We did.
Read the findings. You went through the points, and there were points that were made where you found that she didn't have a duty to inquire within the first 30 days.
Right, we agreed with that.
You found that she was aware of win two post issuance of building permit, and you went through those points. Those are listed in that decision.
And that was operated.
And they were fully discussed at your November 30th meeting.
What was interesting, what was submitted tonight for the materials by Attorney Sunny with respect to the special permit, I thought it was interesting, that there was, and since this is now information that's known to us, that there was a complaint to the building commissioner on January 30th, 2013, by, I believe this was by Okagawa.
It was by Okagawa?
With respect to win two. So there was a complaint in 2013, January 2013, and then we still don't have...
What was the response of the building?
And win two has been consistently discussed in every appeal in front of this board and the court since 2011, I believe.
What was the response of the...
Which is why I gave you all the minutes and decisions.
But if there wasn't a response...
They should have appealed that.
You can appeal a non-response.
Yeah, definitely.
Okagawa was before this board. You have that decision.
And so the latches argument is that, and...
But I know that some of the, one of the, at least one of the responsibility, Commissioner, this is where I'm fuzzy, was I want to wait to see what the court decides with respect to win one before proceeding, which might have caused them to delay.
But then she was represented by counsel.
Who, by own admission, should have known better, but...
Look, I mean, Attorney Costa, you're here, so you want, do you want to shed any light on, I guess, the latches inquiry and what we should be focused on?
Sure, so, right, so we can certainly walk through the points and the findings if you'd like to do that. I guess I would caution the board in a couple of respects. The first is, I appreciate that Attorney Sunny has submitted some information tonight. I don't know what's been submitted previously. I haven't reviewed the full and complete record in this case. But what I can say is that the public hearing is closed. So to the extent that anything new has come in, while that may enlighten the board, it certainly can't be a part of the findings and decision in this particular case. The second is, and certainly, Madam Chairwoman, I think you probably know this, that to the extent that an attorney takes certain action on behalf of a client, that action is attributable to the client. So while it may be the case that maybe the attorney should have taken more prompt action, maybe even acknowledged I wasn't at the earlier sessions of the public hearing, but maybe even acknowledged that action should have been taken sooner, well, that action or inaction is attributable to that attorney's client. And is that fair? Maybe not. Does that, you know, provide the client with some other remedy outside of this forum against that attorney? Maybe so, maybe not. But it's certainly not an issue that should properly be before this board. So, again, I'm happy to walk through the findings in this regard, and I think that there are acknowledgements, I know that there are acknowledgements in the findings with respect to some of the issues you just referenced. But in the end, my understanding based upon Attorney Bobrowski's briefing of me before tonight's meeting was that the board had generally concurred at its last meeting, upon close of the public hearing, that the doctrine of latches did in fact bar this appeal. So that's how the decision's been drafted. Decision's not in final form. If you think that modifications need to be made to it, certainly you can make that a part of your vote, and we'll adjust the decision accordingly before it gets finalized.
In the minutes of your November 30th meeting, you just voted on, so they're before you.
Right. Do you want to look at it?
They need to review those.
Go ahead.
Well, no, well, I, I just want to make sure if you're, or if you want to have further discussion. Obviously, we can do that.
You know...
Do you want to take some time and review the minutes from November 30th?
No, I understand what the discussion was. It's more frustration with the fact that the inaction of the building commissioner at the same time, I thought, put the client in a pickle.
But that's not, that's not what's before you.
I understand.
And she had other alternatives, as you discussed, you know, at a different hearing, which I, we shouldn't be bringing up, so... But it's completely up to the board.
To the extent that it assists you, sir, or the board generally in making its decision, the case law certainly says that the 14-day timetable in the zoning act for a building inspector or commissioner to respond to an enforcement request is not a mandatory timetable. It's a directory timetable. The case law indicates that although the language of the statute suggests that it's a mandatory standard, it's not. With that said, the case law also goes on to explain that it's the responsibility of the applicant, the requestor, if there is inaction by the building inspector, to wait a reasonable period of time, not on the 15th day, not on the day after expiration of the 14-day directory time period, but a reasonable time thereafter if there's no response, to take further action. That would typically be an appeal to the zoning board of appeals and then further exhaustion of remedies, be it in the Superior Court or the land court. So I know that, both on behalf of my municipal clients and my private clients, I get this question often because I don't know that, every last detail of this case, but yours would not be the first building inspector or commissioner to not take prompt action within 14 days.
Correct.
And it, as you say, it does put an applicant, a requestor, in a pickle, not knowing exactly how to respond, but...
Where do you go next?
Right.
And this is not the first case like this that has come before us with respect to the building commissioner's action or lack of action. So that's why I'm a little uncomfortable about it, but I think that the, a good case was made for latches in this particular case, so...
Okay. So are you...
Because it's more than, what was it, more than 12 months?
Yeah, well, it was almost over five years since the...
No, no, but from the time...
Three years from operation of 2012.
Three, yes.
Not from the time of operation, from the time the...
The request was made.
The building commissioner's letter.
Right.
And I guess, thank you, I do want to say thank you, Attorney Costa, because I shouldn't have brought up the other, the other documents, but the decision, my decision was made based on what was presented during the public hearing and the documents that were before us, and I was clear on that at the last hearing, and I stand by that, so, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention one thing. I did vote in favor, I did vote to deny the appeal based on latches, but just a question for you, Attorney Costa, why was latches before this board? In other words, I've never, it just seems that, it just seems that, it's just a general question, I'm a little late to the party on it, but it seems beyond this board, and that's for a judge to decide, but I guess since we're quasi-judicial, is that why it was before the board?
That's right. The zoning boards of appeals often struggle with the procedure established under the zoning act for administrative appeals.
Right.
I think that if you ask different practitioners, they have different opinions on whether it's the best process. You're being put in a position where you're being asked to act in an unbiased, unprejudiced fashion, and yet one of the parties to the appeal is typically your own building inspector or commissioner, so that in and of itself is problematic. With that said, boards often struggle with it because it's different than the usual procedures that you follow for the granting of variances or special permits. You're acting as a tribunal, as if you were a court consisting of a panel of five judges or justices presiding over a case, hearing adversarial positions, representing the petitioner or the respondent, and then you're making a decision based upon the facts before you. In most cases, there aren't many issues of law that arise, which is good news for boards because typically boards aren't made up of five attorneys or individuals who...
Correct, yeah, that's where I was going with it, you know?
Right.
It was odd that we were, you know, looking at latches, which is, I understand it, but I've never seen that ever in 15 years, latches.
And, and I've got to tell you, latches...
I'm okay with it.
Latches doesn't come up often, even in a judicial context.
Right.
And I will say that rarely do these sorts of more technical, more legal issues come up before boards. This is certainly a unique circumstance.
Yeah.
I had a similar circumstance a number of years ago where an issue in the case before the zoning board of appeals, I represented the petitioner in that case, was the petitioner's standing to even be before the board. Standing is a legal concept. Typically, it never is even, never arises or is even raised by any party until you get to the Superior Court or the land court.
Sure.
And yet in that case, it ultimately resulted in my client, the petitioner, being denied an opportunity to even present the case on the merits, and that was upheld on appeal. So these issues do arise sometimes at the ZBA level. It's unusual.
Yeah.
This is an unusual case due to the lengthy period of time after which action was taken or not taken before these proceedings got underway. So it's unusual, but it's certainly lawful. It certainly happened before, there is precedent for it.
Thank you. Excellent analysis.
And we've done the same, the standing, we actually, the Allison versus Hadad case that's cited in this decision, we said that parties didn't have standing to even bring their claim, and that decision ended up being a latches decision at the land court. And we didn't decide it on latches, we decided it on standing, but it was on a legal basis as well.
We've dealt with standing quite a few times.
Yes.
This is my third time, I think, dealing with latches.
So are we, everybody feel ready to vote on this?
Oh, yeah.
You are free to change your vote? I can, I know, as now, but...
No, I haven't. I wanted to have the discussion.
Yeah. I think it was fair. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny the appeal. Make a motion to deny the appeal, deny appeal of 70-15.
As the matter was barred from the doctrine.
Because the matter was barred because of the doctrine of latches.
Okay. And...
I'll second it.
Okay, so that was Mr. Murphy and Mr. Van Kuren. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that was unanimous. And then we need a motion to approve the decision as drafted for appeal number 7015.
Make a motion to approve the decision as drafted. And second it.
So that's Mr. Murphy and Mr. Van Kuren. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's unanimous as well.
Okay. Wahoo. Next one.
Request for board administrative approval to extend timeframe for the comprehensive permit, number 1809 5313, Holly Park Development, North Falmouth, determine it's not a substantial change.
This is from Peter Freeman on behalf of Michael Galasso. We have a 40B that was issued in 2009. It's been continued twice, or extended, excuse me, twice by this board. Once on behalf of Cubby, the original developer. The second time it was on behalf of Mr. Galasso, who was transferring the comprehensive permit into his name, and we gave him an 18-month extension. The board, about a year ago, I believe it was now, transferred the permit again from Michael Galasso TRI to McGansett Crossing. So they are...
Which are related entities, or...
That's already...
I'm just trying to remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand the...
Now he is in the process of trying to get through approval by the planning board on behalf of the LIP portion of this, so he is requesting an extension of one year for the comprehensive permit. Here's Attorney Freeman's letters. Thank you. Copy of the letters, letter. And Mr. Galasso is here to speak if you need to hear from him. So this, eventually, will come back to the board for a modification, I believe.
Okay.
But right now, he's just, he's asking for a year extension.
Mr. Galasso, you're here, so if you want to make a few comments, you're more than welcome.
Sure, great, thank you very much. Chairman Michael Galasso, 200 Palmer Ave, one of the members of McGansett Crossing LLC. We acquired the property in 2013. It's an existing 40B with three affordable housing units. TRI, which is one of the members of McGansett LLC, is an affordable housing developer. We've been working on redesigning the project since then to be a more energy-efficient project and more in keeping with the neighborhood character. You'll see those changes hopefully in the near future. And last year, the town established a new LIP process that has taken us a little bit more time to complete and anticipate it, though the planning board did vote last Tuesday night to endorse the changes, which were the changes in the plans and also the change in ownership from the original LIP, which was to the original contractor, which was Cubby Construction. So it's now been approved by the planning board. It will now go on to the selectmen, hopefully sometime later this month, if not the first of the year. So we're asking for additional time to complete that process, to come back before you with the changes to the plan, to complete our building plans and pull up building permit.
Let me see if anybody has questions.
I do. Just out of curiosity, the modifications of the plan, do they have to go in front of and be granted approval by the HAC?
DHCD would be the only one.
I mean, not HAC, but DHCD. Or, I mean, not HAC, but DHCD.
Yes, and they have already been approved by DHCD.
They have.
Yes.
That is my question.
Okay.
No.
Okay, how's everybody feeling? Is this substantial or insubstantial?
I'm happy to endorse this.
The guidelines of 760 CMR 56.114, I believe, state that this would be an insubstantial.
Okay, so is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Motion to, make a motion.
So can or?
Oh, okay.
Second.
Okay, so we'll say that that is Mr. Foreman and Mr. Murphy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so it's exempt for, it's insubstantial.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I have the original?
Yes.
The copy, please.
Bylaw review update, I don't think that there is an update still.
Uh, no.
Okay.
And I, it's, I have not contacted Frank Duffy or Brian Curry in probably three weeks on this, so my apologies.
Yes.
And Ken Foreman was going to try and help me on this as well, I believe.
Yeah, after, maybe.
Okay.
Maybe.
Okay, um, correspondence, board updates, I don't think there are any, is any, one, two, three, we still need an associate member.
We do, I'll check with Selectment's office, I apologize.